Anyway, good evening. Welcome to the June 18th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to go ahead and call Rol.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Logitu Fa Asa to do our invocation. Pastor Fa Asa? And he has with him someone.
Mayor?
Yes. And if you could give your name, I know that you're, are you in training?
Yeah, my name is Tua, Retuinga Sanora.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, let's pray. Father God, we just give you and you only all the praise and glory. But Father God, we just gather in unity, Father God, and just leaders in the city, Father God, and the community, Father God. So we just, our prayer, Lord God, is unity, Father God, that we may come together and whatever, Father God, that is here, Lord, we pray, Lord God, that we may, as we just move forward, Father God, we just pray for this unity, that we may come together, Father God, to make everything just work out right. Now, Lord God, we know that to get things right, Lord God, there has to be a vision of something. So we just ask, Lord God, for this, as we get together, that there's a vision of something so we can move together in agreement on the same mission to make things work out. All the glory to you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe it's up to you, Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes?
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I do have a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the Payam Kowicham, people of the West, as a traditional land caretakers of the land on which Oceanside is built and its surrounding traditional cultural landscapes. Today, the Payam Kowicham are known as Luiseño and are made up of seven bands: La Jolla, Palapauma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Suboba. We are mindful of the indigenous peoples in this place, and we pay our respects to the Luiseño, past, present, and emerging. We are grateful to have the opportunity to be part of this community in Luiseño Territory and to honor their history, culture, and perseverance of spirit. Thank you. Thank you. And we start off with our Proclamations and Presentations. And our first proclamation is in honor of Parks and Rec Month. It's actually month of July, and since we will not be meeting in July, we're going to go ahead and do this proclamation. And we here in Oceanside take Parks and Rec very seriously. And so I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Parks and Rec Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness and play by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports and enrichment activities, teen centers and programs, senior activity centers, adult fitness, and enrichment programs, free community events, and beyond. And whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities. And whereas Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits, increases property values and tourism, and helps to reduce crime. And whereas Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitat and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of parkland. And whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in their recreational opportunities. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month 2025 in Oceanside, and encourage all residents and visitors to enjoy Oceanside's many parks, beaches, programs, and events to enhance their social, physical, and mental well-being. So. And I hope you have many, many positive experiences this coming summer. I have right here our Parks and Rec Director, Manny Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the public, Manny Gonzalez, Director of Parks and Recreation. We're so excited to have some of our Parks and Recreation team to kick off what will be an entire month of recreational activities. We are trying to schedule an event or a program that we're highlighting, whether it's offered through the Parks and Recreation Department or one of our partners, every day throughout the month of July. And these are available for free. So we start off with, for example, our 3rd of July fireworks show at El Corazon, where we will also be premiering our drone show. And lots of great opportunities for the family to come out, enjoy music, enjoy a great fireworks display. And then that Saturday, we're partnering to host a Mission 55 Semper Seao Free Football Clinic that will bring together some past and current NFL players to work with kids in the community and give back. On July 20th, we have the Friends of El Corazon will be hosting a concert in the park at El Corazon. And we just have a variety of different programs that will be available for all ages to participate in throughout the city of Oceanside. So I encourage you, whether it's through one of these programs or whether you go out with your friends, family, whomever, spend a little time in one of our outdoor spaces. We have the most beautiful beaches, the most beautiful parks, and just an opportunity to be healthy both in terms of spirit, mind, and body. And so with that, I will pass on the mic and have everybody on our team introduce themselves.
And he starts with me. Hey, listen, I was going through some old file documents recently, and I realized that I have served as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner in this city for 11 years. Then I went back in my not-so-quick mind and looked back over some of the capital improvements. I mean, the arena, the Aquatics Center, the trail extension, the new skate park that we built in this time, not to mention all the thousands of changes and improvements in other ways. And I'm telling you, I'm really proud to have been a part of all this because, you know what? Parks make life better.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Johnny Cho. I'm the Division Manager.
Hello, my name is Karina Goodwin. I'm the Rec Specialist for Senior Services.
Philip Pollan, Recreation Supervisor for Aquatics.
Hello, I am Amanda Roswell, the Aquatics Program Administrator.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Lucero. I am a Rec Supervisor for Sports and Athletics.
Hi, I'm Marissa Cesario, and I am the Administrative Analyst.
Good evening, I'm Judy Powers, Recreation Program Administrator.
Well, they all have fan clubs because really, truly, there's no place like Oceanside for Parks and Rec. And I know we're also looking to try to do things for all ages. Did you want to say just a couple of words about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're definitely working on some intergenerational programming. We are trying to produce more programs that are available for youth, but also bring the family together in our centers, in our parks, and really make our centers a hub where the entire family can enjoy an afternoon or a weekend.
Thank you. And there is also, I guess it's the, the time is done for the participating and putting in input, right? The surveys, right? It's age-friendly.
I'm sorry. We're working on our action plan for the AARP Age Friendly. It's a five-year plan, and the idea is that we will look at how the city emphasizes and makes Oceanside more livable for older adults and people living with disabilities. So we're working on finalizing that plan. We had a series of public meetings, over eight meetings. We did a survey, we did some interviewing, stakeholder interviews. So really, a comprehensive process to get us to understand what the community of Oceanside wanted to see, not just in our parks, but throughout the entire city.
Fantastic. So another big hand for Parks and Rec, the team. And I know, I'm looking forward to all of you having so much fun this summer. So time for a picture? Well, this next item is actually a presentation, and it is about the newest, hottest thing happening in Oceanside. And it is called Strike Team. I've got a couple of really important people here. Come on down, please, to talk about who Strike Team is. But it is indoor football league here in Oceanside. You may have heard about it. Maybe you haven't gone to a game yet. There's still time for you to do that. First thing I heard was, you know what? We believe we're going to win. Oceanside is their new hometown.
Strike Force.
Strike Force. Did I say Strike Team? Oh, there's Strike. Yeah, Strike Force. And I'm so excited because we do have here Gino Gerbo, who's a General Manager, and then we also have Greg Anderson, who's on the board. And it's just really, really fantastic. So I'm going to go ahead and hand you the mic.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the Strike Force. So we've been around for a few years. We were playing down at Sports Arena, and this year we moved up into the new arena in front wing.
The best place, right, Oceanside.
Which is fantastic from a fan standpoint and just for watching an event. So if you haven't been there yet, highly recommend getting out and checking it out. We've got, we were going to have some players come up. They got caught up in traffic with the fair and everything. So if you want to see the players, you better come out. We've got a game on Sunday. And in honor of the Parks and Rec Month for next month, we've got two games in July, and we will be participating in the Say Out 55 Camp as well. So at our games, football is when they fly into the stands, unlike in other outdoor football. You get to keep it like a foul ball, and then after the game, you can come down and get it signed. So this might look familiar to you, Mayor Sanchez. Signed by the players. And yeah, so again, fast, fun, exciting, affordable family entertainment. Football, I know this is a big football town, got a lot of history here with football. So we'd like to invite everybody out. I know some of these guys came out a few weeks ago and I think had fun.
Yeah.
And so we'd like to invite everyone else out as well.
It's great. It's a lot faster, you know, it's 50 yards. So it's like, oh my God, they're already there, you know? It's fantastic. It's quick, you get to know the players really fast and really excited. This is their first year here in Oceanside. They want, they're really loving Oceanside as the hometown. They've already talked about getting involved in the parade that's coming up, our Freedom Days Parade, so you're going to be able to see them. And basically, they're like asking, well, if we win this league, not if, I guess it was, when, when they win this league, they are hoping that Oceanside will come out big time for them in a parade. So hoping that we can have this new activity really spike a lot of interest in Oceanside, in the hometown, and here in North County. So thank you, guys, for coming here and spreading the word. And I think June 22nd is the game, is the next game?
Yeah, Sunday.
Sunday.
Fifty-five.
At 6 o'clock. Come on down, all right? Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a picture. Let's take a picture first. Come on down. We're going to have all the council. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is another presentation, and this time, it is a presentation on Sandag's Draft Regional Plan 2025. You might say, what the heck is that? So we've got someone here from Sandag, Brian Lane, who is a Senior Transit Planner, to explain what that is. This is actually a time when the public can give their input, all the way until July 18th. So I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Brian.
Perfect.
Who has some interesting slides here.
I do. I'll try to keep this fairly short, keep you moving. I see you have a big crowd here. So thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Brian Lane. I'm a Senior Regional Planner at the San Diego Association of Governments, or Sandag for short. Thank you for making the time for me today to share a little bit about our work and how you can be a part of planning for the future of our region. Today, I'll discuss what Sandag is, what a regional plan is, how we've been developing the 2025 Regional Plan, some transportation projects and programs of interest, especially in North County, and then how the public can provide comment. For those who aren't familiar with us, what is Sandag? We are the Regional Transportation Planning Agency, and we are responsible for planning our transportation system. We also build transportation projects like the 11 New Miles of the Blue Line Trolley to UC San Diego, or the Pershing Bike Way down near Balboa Park. We also preserve our natural resources. Sandag has protected more than 9,000 acres of sensitive lands through our environmental mitigation program. And lastly, we provide resources directly to agencies and communities like our free youth transit passes, or funding to local cities like yours to fix potholes, build bike lanes, and much more. So we get direction from 19 members of our Board of Directors, who are elected officials that represent each of the region's 18 city councils and county Board of Supervisors. And then what is a regional plan? So it's, a regional plan is one of Sandag's most important responsibilities. The plan includes projects, programs, and policies, along with a description of how we will pay for them. That includes estimated costs and revenues. For the past year and a half, we had gathered regional transportation need input from across the region to and from the 2025 Draft Regional Plan through more than 2,000 comments that we received online, eight community workshops, seven Board of Directors workshops, and then seven workshops with Sandag Working Groups and Policy Advisory Committees. So what have we heard as we develop the draft 2025 plan? People want better traffic flow on the highways. We just came up to five from downtown. Hour and 15 minutes to come up there.
Wow.
And also, I know, we know people want improvements to other modes of transportation so that they have options to get around other than cars. They want our public transit system to be faster and more convenient. And lastly, they want to improve safety with more infrastructure for protected bike lanes, walkways, and traffic calming measures on roads where people are using bikeways and walkways.
And Go Side was on that slide.
I know. Based on all our data and analysis, combined with all the feedback we heard, we're proposing a transportation network with hundreds of projects across the region that are either planned to start construction by 2035 or 2050. Additionally, many of these projects and policies will require support from individual cities, the county, or other agencies to make them a reality. This is not just Sandag's plan, but it's the region's plan. The map on this slide doesn't have a lot of detail, but we have an online interactive map that includes details on every project in the plan. So we encourage you to visit our website and explore that map, and I'll have a link to that site at the end. The draft plan also includes 754 miles of new or upgraded active transportation infrastructure for all ages and abilities, allowing more people to walk and bike for shorter trips and get the health benefits of physical activity. For example, the Coastal Rail Trail is included in this network, a planned bike route that will eventually run all the way between Oceanside and Santa Fe Depot in downtown San Diego. It's being constructed in segments by Sandag and the various cities if it passes through. Sandag is currently working to secure funding to build the final Encinitas segment for this trail. You also don't see the policies and programs on that map, but we have a ton. You can read a lot more about all the programs and policies in the regional plan on our website. So North County, the draft plan has hundreds of projects in it. I'll be sharing with you some of the North County projects and programs that you may be interested, also some of those here in Oceanside. As part of the North Coast Corridor Program, which I'm sure you guys are all very privy to, a $6 billion investment in the San Diego economy over the next three decades. The managed lanes on the I-5 will be extended north from Highway 78 to Highway 76 in Oceanside. The project is currently in the design phase, and then construction is expected to start in 2028. The SR 78 Managed Lanes Connector and the Woodland Interchange Project will link the existing I-15 Express Lanes to future Express Lanes on the 78. Pending funding availability and construction is estimated to begin in 2030 for the lane connector and 2033 for the managed lanes themselves. And then over here at the I-5 78 Interchange, there's a project that's federally funded for the initial planning and environmental efforts. $8 million is available for preliminary design and environmental studies for 2024 to 2029. And then over the next few years, as project alternatives are refined, additional funding will need to be identified for design and construction. And that's mostly a Caltrans-led project. I'm sure they've either come here, or hopefully they will keep coming here over the next couple of years as those alternatives are refined. It's not just highways. You know, transit is a big part of our plan. To help speed up the Sprinter trips, we're studying ways to separate the tracks from cars and add second tracks when needed. We work closely with NCTD on that work. We're also proposing more funding to increase how often the buses and Sprinter come and to improve transit amenities, which we've heard from the public is a huge need out there. To provide faster transit service for the community, we have plans to expand our rapid bus network across the region in the next decade. These routes will use technology and infrastructure to get around traffic using express lanes on highways, green light priority at stoplights, and more. We're proposing 15 new rapid routes that'll serve just the North County area alone. One route already officially started planning efforts, the Rapid 483, which will connect Riverside County to Mecula down to San Marcos via Escondido. And then the next one on the slate for starting some of the planning work is the 494. And these routes, we're just using right now, the numbers themselves will probably have the public help us number them, so look forward to that. But the Route 494 would connect Oceanside to Vista via Mission Avenue. NCTD is really interested in this one as a first one. If we secure enough funding to continue planning and finishing these routes, the soonest they could offer services could be as soon as 2029. The Los San Corridor, we've heard a lot about, that's the railway from Los Angeles to San Diego to San Luis Obispo. It's vital for passenger, freight, and even military movement throughout the San Diego region and beyond. Landslides, rapid erosion, seismic activity, along with Delmar coastal bluffs, have repeatedly caused the rail corridor shut down to address safety concerns. So a multi-phase, ongoing approach to stabilize the bluffs began in 2001. Neighborhood shuttles, we've been hearing a lot about. We just saw the O-Side Shuttle on our way in here, making the turn down onto Mission Avenue. We know that transit stops can't be next to where everyone lives and works, so it's why 13 shuttle service areas are being planned in North County to connect residents to those transit stops, and also pick them up for short nearby trips with on-demand service. They could be big vans in some areas that are using them, or even like the electric shuttles that you guys have up here. Government agencies and community partners across the region will be working to find funding and make these services a reality in the coming years. Partnering with the city of Oceanside, we launched the Go O-Side Shuttle Pilot Program in 2023 to serve downtown Oceanside and Eastside neighborhoods. NCTD also just launched a van shuttle service that will serve the greater Vista area, along with San Marcos. They're also working on a shuttle service in the Fallbrook-Pala area, and I think that's the next one they're going to be piloting here in the coming years. Like I mentioned earlier, habitat restoration is a big part of what we do and plan, and it's something we have to do often for mitigation for many of our projects. It helps local endangered species by protecting their homes, buying land and bringing back their habitats, and managing and monitoring this land to track the health of wildlife and plants. Last year, we completed Phase Two of the San De Gito Lagoon Wetland Restoration, south of Villa de Le Valle and east of the I-5 Freeway. So how do we actually ask for comments? These were just a few of the projects and programs in the 2025 Draft Plan. We encourage you to look at the rest of the draft on our website as well. To leave an official comment on the draft plan, you can either visit our online map tool and leave a comment, or you can email the address on here, regionalsplan@sandag.org. You can call the phone number and leave a message, or join an in-person regional planning session and comment in person. I think, believe we just had the one in Vista last night. I don't know if anyone was able to make that, but we did get people to come out to that. You can find all these events at the sandag.org website and on our calendar. And like you mentioned earlier, the deadline is July 18th. We're at our Transportation Committee that day, where we'll be hearing, having a public hearing. So stay connected with us. We hope you'll stay in touch by signing up for emails, following us on social media. If there's a question you think of later that you want to ask us, please don't hesitate to email the team. They're always happy to answer. We hope you'll participate and share your feedback with us soon over the next month. With that, thank you for your time, Mayor, and I'll be happy to take questions if you have time.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you so much for making the trip an hour and 15 minutes, right?
Yeah. Coaster was a much faster option.
Lived experiences.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. So we're now on our closed session report. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. There was no meeting on Item 1, Conference with Labor Negotiator. On Item 2, Conference with Real Property Negotiator, council did meet in closed session regarding two separate items. First, the property at 714 Peer View Way, negotiating party, city of Oceanside, Oceanside Museum of Art, and the real property negotiator, Vicky Gutierrez, real estate manager. There was deliberation and direction, but no reportable action under the Brown Act. And as to property 2, 110 Jones Road, negotiating parties, city of Oceanside and North County Transit District, real property negotiator, Vicky Gutierrez, real estate manager. Again, there was deliberation and discussion, but no reportable action under the Brown Act at this time.
Thank you. And I should probably explain why we have this tube here that looks like, you know, maybe something should be going through there, like maybe kids or something. But what happened was, our air conditioning in the whole Civic Center is being worked on, and so this is an attempt to make sure that you stay cool during the meeting. Hopefully, you will, and hopefully, we all will. So if, for some reason, because it does make a sound, you have trouble hearing, we can certainly try to speak clearer and louder. Asking you also, when you come to the podium, please try to speak clearer too and louder as you can. Thank you so much for your patience on that. We are now on the consent calendar items, Items 3 through 32. I understand that someone has pulled Item Number, is it 23?
Yes, we've had Items 13, 23, 28, and 32 pulled by the public.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion for balance to approve the balance?
I pulled Number 10.
Number 10, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the balance, but I, yes, recuse myself on Number 11.
So hopefully, you heard that?
I have my mic on, I'm sorry.
Okay, say it again, if you would.
So, I'm going to pull Number 10. I will move that we approve the balance, but I'm going to recuse on Number 11 because of residency requirement.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second that. There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0, with the exception of Number 11, with Councilmember Robinson recusing himself.
All right, let's try for two minutes each. Here, the first one is Number 10, and that is, staff recommends city council approve Amendment 1 to property lease agreement with Oceanside Chamber of Commerce for use of city-owned property located at 928 North Coast Highway for a six-month term beyond the current expiration date, with total revenue of $12,000, and authorize city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you. Originally, I was going to ask to try and extend this, but I think all the details have been worked out, and I spoke with the city manager. But what I would like to do with your approval is to give the city manager authorization after February, if the chamber hasn't located a building that he can do a month by month for up to six months, and he can approve that if we have city staff or something that's available to move in, and he doesn't want to approve it, he doesn't have to. But if we're not ready to put people in the building yet, then that might give the chamber a little more time. Locating a building to suit their needs has not been an easy search. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who signed up on this item? No, okay. Is there?
So, I guess that would be my motion then to add that to the...
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. My understanding is that they have already identified the neighborhood, which is Ocean Ranch. I don't know if you should say that out loud. But I think that it should be fine the way it is, but we can go ahead and have a motion on this and then have a second motion if warranted. All right, let's vote on this.
Motion fails, 2-3, Sanchez, Figueroa, Joyce, no.
Okay, I'm going to move approval of Item Number 10. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1, Robinson, no.
Thank you. Item Number 13, Staff recommends City Council approve Amendment Number Four to the Public Works Agreement with Sing Group, Inc., in the amount of $935,492 for a new agreement total not to exceed $3.2 million for encampment-related trash removal services and authorize city manager to execute the amendment. I believe that's Jimmy Knott, Mr. Knott.
Mayor, councils, Jimmy Knott, 127, Cherry Lane. I don't know if you've done a background investigation of the Sing Group, but it's far-reaching, and I would encourage you to do such. It brings up a lot of questions because of its national, international involvement. Secondly, is since this is involving trash removal from encampment-related sites and looking at some of the profiteering that is going on with other encampment sites throughout the nation and from different homeless areas that private entities that have similar operations have done, where the entities and their employees have actually stolen items from where they're removing the trash items and actually pawned them off. I think the city should actually be very clear that those items should not be profited from, and that if there is any profit made, it should be put into a homeless relief fund, that the profiting should be done immediately to the homeless and for the benefit of homeless, not for the benefit of the business that has it. And I think this should be something that any excess of any profit from any recycling should go into said account. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. I understand. Mr. Borrego, have we had any complaints?
No.
Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, no, we have not received any complaints about the work that the Sing Company has done. They've actually been a very responsive contractor, abiding by all of our rules, which is why we've actually expanded their contract in years past. But certainly, Mr. Knott's points are well-taken, and we'll continue to monitor to make sure that remains the case.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval, Staff recommendation.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second. Deputy Mayor?
I just want to say thanks for those comments, and then also, I understand that we're just going to be continuing to look at all of our services around the homelessness category of spending, so as we move forward, this will be part of that review. And I'm happy to support because I see that the San Luis Rey Riverbed is included in this, and that's an area that I know many of the neighbors in District One have been asking about for a long time, so.
Right, we've received a lot of emails about that. So there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item Number 23, Staff recommends City Council accept $1.8 million in grant funds from the California Coastal Commission and appropriate these funds to the grant fund account. Approve Amendment Two to the Professional Services Agreement with GHD, Inc., in the amount of $1.6 million for a total revised contract price of $4.9 million for Phase Two Sand Nourishment and Retention Pilot Project, which is Reef Beach, funded by the grant. Approve donation funds from Resilient Cities Catalyst, authorize the creation of a limited-term full-time management analyst position and an hourly extra help consulting assistant position to support coastal management using grant and donated funds, and authorize city manager to execute the amendment upon receipt of all supporting documents. These recommendations do not require the use of city general funds. All associated costs discussed herein are fully covered by an external grant and donated funds. And this was...
Charlie Bowen?
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Charlie Bowen, Communications Director for Save Oceanside Sand. I support accepting the $1.8 million Coastal Commission grant, the donated funds from Resilient Cities Catalyst, the creation of two limited-term coastal zone administration positions, and the other items in this agenda item. These positions, which require no city general funds and which are limited in term and scope, will provide much-needed staff capacity to implement Reef Beach. Momentum is building. As reported in Sunday's Union Tribune, Sandeg Shoreline Preservation Working Group voted last Thursday to select Reef Beach as the regional sand retention pilot project, a major step forward for Oceanside. The article went on to report that later that same day, at the Carlsbad Beach Preservation Commission meeting, a commissioner said that it might be time for Carlsbad to rethink its resolution, and went on to state, quote-unquote, "I think Reef Beach is a really good project." The tides are turning. That shift is thanks in part to SOS's continuous education and outreach efforts. We all share the goal of restoring Oceanside's beaches and ensuring shoreline resiliency for future generations. Approving this agenda item tonight builds on that momentum. SOS also urges the city to increase beach restoration funding in the next budget cycle. When Reef Beach is approved, permitted, and ready to be implemented, Oceanside must be prepared to cost-share. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Move approval, is there a second? There's a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item Number 28, City Treasurer and Staff recommend that the City Council accept the City Treasurer's report for the quarter ending March 31, 2025, and adopt a resolution approving the City of Oceanside's investment policy. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Jimmy Knott. I have been for years advocating that the City Treasurer, when the quarterly report is given, that the City Treasurer, being an elected official, be given a privilege of giving a report. Therefore, I am pulling this item to offer the City Treasurer an opportunity to report to the citizens who have elected her an opportunity to give said report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Migas, would you like to say a couple of words? Your mic.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, the City's Treasurer's report ended March 31, 2025. We're requesting that the City Council adopt it. This is a quarterly investment report, which provides a full disclosure of the City's investment activities. And again, it just outlines that our investments are in conformity with the investment policy adopted by the City Council on June 26 of 2024. This report's intended to provide an awareness of the activity and performance of the investment portfolio. So as of March 31, 2025, the City had $19,962.71 in its operating account, $1,035,196 in the local agency investment fund, and $67,661,808 in the California Asset Management Program. And as such, the City has adequate funds to meet its cash flow requirements for the six months. And again, our investment portfolio is constructed to maintain principal. We want to protect what we have, but also ensure liquidity for the City. We don't want to use our principal for funding that's not already been allocated because that's already in our budget. It's kind of analogous to dipping into your savings account to pay for everyday expenses. So again, our investment policy again is up for our annual review. It's also to be looked at in this meeting, and I am happy to talk to anybody who would like more detail on this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I move approval, is there a second? Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I will second it, but I just want to thank our Treasurer for being here and representing. I know we don't always ask questions, but she's made herself available at most of our council meetings. And also, I also want to acknowledge our Citizen Investment Oversight Committee and their role that they play in reviewing the work, plus our finance staff. So thank you.
Thank you.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item Number 32, Staff recommends City Council approve and adopt the revised City of Oceanside Salary Schedule and Executive Management Salary Schedule retroactively effective April 13, 2025. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Jimmy Knott. I have reviewed the City's budget, and the second highest cost next to police and fire is our executive salaries. And I would like to remind the City is underneath this a restrain and tightening budget. I would like to see if our City Council would like to take and review this a little bit more closely in our future budgetary reviews to see how we can consolidate and potentially revise some of the decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I move approval, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item Number 37, Under Adoption of Ordinances. Staff recommends City Council adopt an ordinance approving zoning amendment and local coastal program amendment, approving amendments to Article 46 of the zoning ordinance to allow the City Council to conduct a de novo hearing of appealed Planning Commission decisions on development projects introduced on June 4, 2025. Is there a motion to...
And we do have public on this.
Oh, is there? How many? Okay. Mr. Knott?
I want to thank Mayor and Councilmembers for taking and bringing this forward. This provides an opportunity, instead of going through a horrendous mishmash of city policies and public calls for items to come forward, like what's had to happen with the Eddie Jones. This way, it empowers you who have been elected to take and represent the people. So thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Okay, I move adoption, is there a second? Is there a second to... All right. So there's a motion in a second, please title.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Article 46 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, establishing a revised ordinance that will allow City Council to conduct a de novo hearing of Planning Commission decisions being appealed.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1, Weiss, no.
Thank you. Item Number 38, Staff recommends City Council adopt an ordinance officially designating the fire hazard severity zones within the City of Oceanside as recommended by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection in accordance with Government Code Section 51179 introduced on June 4, 2025. Any requests to speak on this item?
John?
Mr. Knott?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Jimmy Knott. I want to thank the designated fire zone individuals who evaluated this, the different committees from the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, and our local city fire department, as well as the city staff and the city council, because there is a lot of near-truth in the redesignation. And I think that as our society evolves, especially with, like with lithium batteries, even this will have to be revised in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. I move adoption, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, please title.
This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 11 of the Oceanside City Code by the addition of Article 2, Section 11.15.1 to formally adopt the State Fire Marshal Fire Severity Maps pursuant to Government Code Sections 51178 and 51179.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item Number 39, Staff recommends City Council adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 29 of the Oceanside City Code to establish wastewater system capacity buy-in fee adjustments, and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 37 of the Oceanside City Code to establish water system buy-in fee adjustments, introduced June 4, 2025. Any requests to speak on this item?
Jimmy Knott?
Mr. Knott?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Jimmy Knott. I was wondering if also in accordance with the City that we're monitoring the exact amount of our supply so it does not affect the residents and the amount that we're having to pay for our water and wastewater system. Because what happens is that if they, whoever it is, buys into the system and it overloads the system and creates a capacity problem that causes the public to have to pay extra, I want to make sure that this does not affect the residents and those who are low income, and that it's not an excess burden. So I wanted to take and say, you know, this is a good type of issue to bring forward to adjust and adjust it fairly, but I want to say to make sure that protections are in place.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Move adoption, is there a second? Okay, there's a motion in a second by Deputy Mayor. Please title. Councilmember Robinson?
Just real quick, staff, I should have asked this before. If somebody puts an ADU in their yard, do they have to get a separate meter for that
Mr. Borrego?
I'm going to defer to our city planner, Sergio Madera.
Smart move, sir.
I don't know the answer offhand.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Robinson. So I think when it comes to AD, there's a number of different options a homeowner could pursue. It could be that they install a new meter for it. It could be that they upsize the existing meter. It could also mean that they have to have a sub-meter behind it. Water utilities typically dictates those requirements, but there's several options available. I don't think any of them preclude the payment of the water and sewer connection fee.
So at minimum, they'd be on the hook for the $9,800 bucks, maybe more, depending if they change meter size, things like that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the exact amounts, but yes, that assumption is generally correct.
Thanks, just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote.
Well, before...
Did you title?
We did not.
Oh, my apologies.
And just to clarify, there are two ordinances here. We will take a single vote. So this is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter... Oceanside City Code, Chapter 29, Section 29.11.1, writing wastewater system buy-in fee increases, as well as an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 37, Section 37.56.1, to establish waste, I'm sorry, water system buy-in fees.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Why snow?
Thank you. Now, under Public Communications on Off Agenda Items, number 35. Ken Layton? How many requests to speak under item 36?
I was hoping to follow Jack Feller, but oh, well, the over-the-top drama of Max Disposti and his outrageous attacks on individual members of the city council sort of makes you wonder what exactly is going on. Of course, this is all over the flagpole and the fact that his flag wasn't being flown throughout the month of June. And so, you have to keep in mind that, you have to ask yourself, how is your life better if the flag had have been flying this month? And how is your life not as good since it's not flying this month? And the fact of the matter is that there were six different groups, at least six, that contacted the city. There was a religious group, there was a military group, there was a civil war group, is my understanding. They all wanted to have their flag. And the city manager and the city attorney and/or the city attorney had to spend their resources to deal with that. And of course, in these litigious times that we live in, I think the chances are that we're probably looking for a lawsuit. And that may, was probably the reason why the council majority flipped and said, maybe we shouldn't give such a protected, you know, a goodie to this one group and not have others. And that's the reality there. And the fact is that over the years, the city has done a lot for Max's LGBTQ center. The city pushed the safe parking, the overnight stay there, which gave them hundreds of thousands of dollars in rent or towards their mortgage, which is great. The city gave them $17,000 in staff so they could have their Pride by the Sea event. The city gave the center $75,000 in Measure X money so they could run their unicorn homes program, and I think they're going to do the same again tonight for another year. The city gave them, gave the center $50,000 for COVID relief. And the city gave them $70,000 for a drug program. And the city gave them over $100,000 to, so that they could open their new center and deal with ADA, to make it ADA compliant. This is all great, but to think that Max would come up here and, I don't know, is he doing it to get money? Is he doing it to say woe is me and to get media coverage? I have to wonder, Max, what makes you tick? Why would you go to all this effort to bring all this unnecessary drama and woe is me drama to this when in fact, the city has bent over backwards to help you and your cause and the center over the years? And the other issue is that the, there is a group that grades cities all across the country on how it treats equal rights issues. And for the last few years, the City of Oceanside has got 100. So, to suggest that because Max Disposti didn't get his flag for a month and because thereby opening up the floodgates for all these lawsuits that are more than likely going to happen, and then he uses it to publicly trash the city in general and city councilmen in general, having received all this money for your center, I suggest, Mr. Disposti, that's sort of ingenuous, and I really think you should save the drama for your mama and please cut back on all this vitriol you're throwing at the city collectively and council members individually. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 36. Let's start with the first person.
Our first speaker on item number 36 is Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Ms. Hammerschmidt, come forward. You have up to three minutes.
It's up to you. Oh, seven speakers are on this item.
Yep, three minutes. But we will be stopping after, at 6:00. Go ahead.
My notes just disappeared. So, I'd live. Arlene Hammerschmidt, Rulish Fire Mountain. Oceanside community, the youth sport community is walking around now like they have an infected stab wound in their side that has not going to heal until this incomplete investigation that the city granted, accepted, as done, but not complete, as was stated in Mr. Lee's own report, gets actually to the core question of who knew what when. And given the fact that our previous Parks and Recreation manager has been released from his job that followed here in Oceanside, it gives question to a lot of us in the Oceanside community, what happened here that we don't know about? So, the request is strongly to let this be put in the past by completing that investigation, asking the questions of those who were employed at the time in question, and you all know what I'm talking about. I'm sorry, the audience probably doesn't. Let it go in the past because it's not going to go away until the questions get answered. I will tell you that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wayne Godinay, followed by Sam Pomelli.
Wayne Godinay, thank you, Mayor and city council for this time here. My comments probably to the general public are going to be esoteric, but for us, it's been going on for two, three, four years. And I want to echo what Arlene had just mentioned. There was an investigation, and I was interviewed in that investigation regarding the abuse of the joint use program with OUSD. OUSD is Oceanside Unified School District, not OU Sneaky Devil, you know? We found out that the division manager made a decision that he shouldn't have, and he allowed the use of the joint use. And this was back in 2019, up until a few years back. And it's come to my attention that the division manager and his supervisor, that was the director of the Junior South Beach Community Center, were recently terminated. When that happened recently, and a lot of the community came to me, and it was brought to our attention that some of the things that we brought up, that the city attorney deemed that were not illegal, maybe unethical, there was no accountability, no transparency, and these guys were allowed to leave Oceanside and get a job in San Marcos. To be terminated two people at the same time from government, that hardly ever happens, and this happened. So, we're commissioning and we're petitioning for our council, some of the members there, to city manager, finish the interviews that we recommended. In my interview with the investigator, I gave the names, three or four staff members, and I told him, if you do not interview these people, I will never accept your investigation, your report. He didn't interview. And if you're saying that he had the discretion to just pop into Oceanside and interview anybody, and these people that I mentioned didn't get interviewed, then it causes that misperception right there, or that perception of abuse. And a perception of conflict of interest is going to be a reality if that isn't rectified, and it has to be. Finish the interviews, and do it, and do it soon. And that's what we're here for. It's going to take some intestinal fortitude and some of the staff members and council members, but I'm going to tell you, this will never go away in the Samoan community. This is always going to hang. You can have a career of two years, four years, and be here. It's not going to, in fact, it's already being passed down to the next generation of our community. When something is wrong, do the right thing, address it head-on, and fix it. That's being pragmatic. That's basically common sense. It has to be done. You know, exercise that perspicacity, you know, that energy to get these things done right for the sake of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Pomelli, followed by Jonah Newcom. Sam Pomelli? No, Sam, oh, there you are, Sam.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Pomelli. Basically, I've come before you. Thank you for the honor of coming before you, but real quick, basically, what I'm here is something that comes from the heart. I'm one of the, actually, a very special person where I see it. One of the first Samoans born in Oceanside back in 1959. So, I just say that so that way you can get an idea of a lot of the things that we'd experienced in this great city of Oceanside. I back up Wayne and Arlene and their advance because at the core of the problems that we're facing with our interaction, in this case, the Parks and Rec is one where we're basically being ignored. And I'm not talking about, this is not just a recent thing or a passive, this has been ongoing for years. And I know Wayne has served us for years and been dealing with this problem. So, to have, we're pushing for that investigation to be re-looked at upon you guys' approval and how you see it. But as talking for the Samoan community, we prize, you know, you can tell that we have a lot of things that are vested in Samoan. We have a lot of countless people that donate their time to youth sports and so on. But with all the changes in our city, we see a lot of new programs coming in. One of the things directly that we were affected by is because a lot of the ingrown grassroots programs from years have been ignored. And it prompted a lot of confusion, prompted a lot of, you know, conflicts within the staffs and some of these departments in our community. The Samoans are very active. Sports is very important to us. Why? Well, we have countless names of sports athletes in Oceanside in general. But why are those programs very important to us to be especially handled and procured by our locals? First of all, we should have first dibs. Why? Because this is not an area of sports, and those activities are not new to us. And the success of our athletes out of Oceanside proves that track record. But we're concerned about who's coming in, who's actually starting to, it seems like we're being pushed out because we're not being listened to. So, I'm asking you guys, hey, you know, show a little respect, do what's right by the Samoan community or any group of people who have these issues, because they're a real issue. And we all can attest that the future of Oceanside lies in what we do today for the future and our youth. So, you know, we ask you to please, you know, look at these things, and if at all possible, I'm sure you'll come up with the right resolution in order for us to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Jonah Newcom? Jonah Newcom?
Good evening, city council and mayor. I am here to represent my neighborhood. I live out in, out near the back gate of Camp Pendleton, and I'm here to talk about the illegal fireworks that are going on in our neighborhood, and I'm sure it's going on all over the City of Oceanside. And I am just here to find out what we can do about this. This has been on my heart. Today's my anniversary. We were supposed to go away today, and I said, no, I need to come, and I need to speak to you and find out what is going to be done about this. Last year, after two hours of listening to bombs going overhead, I finally called the police department, and I was told, yes, ma'am, by a very nice person, we know it's going on all over the city. That was not comforting to me at all. I did not know what to do. I did not know who else to call. I was afraid for my safety and the safety of my home and my neighbors. I'm just here as a voice to say to you, if you don't know that this is happening, it is. It's dangerous. Fire season, as you know, is all year long. It's no longer just throughout our summer or our fall. I'm just here to speak out and ask what we can do about this.
All right, thank you. Got the chief in the back. He's going to go ahead and meet you outside the chambers.
Thank you very much for your time.
Leo Chapinski?
Mayor, city council, citizens. And I found out I'm on TV. A bunch of people talked to me the other day. They said, hey, you look pretty good in that red robe. Here's the deal, compassion is a very simple word. It's in the dictionary, and you might want to look at it. You've got so many homeless veterans on your streets. They're living in bushes. They're living in cars. They're living in vans. We need safe parking. Compassion. We take care of our dogs and our cats better than we do our veterans. Folks that signed up, like myself, at 17, from '70 to '81, and then again at 48 years of age, from 2001 to 2004, where's the compassion? Well, the good news is I found some on YouTube the other day at a zoo. A young baby springbok was drowning. Lion looked over, and the chimpanzees looked over, and a few of the birds looked over, and really didn't have a lot of compassion. There was an elephant that walked over and looked at that little baby springbok drowning and grabbed it by its antlers and took it out of the water and saved it. But we can't do that for our veterans, people who put their signature and life on the line for you, your parents, grandparents, your great-grandparents, the children, grandchildren. Some of these folks suffer from a lot of different things, depression, anxiety, anger, drugs, alcohol, a lot of things. But you could help them if you wanted to, and that's where safe parking comes into play. And we have no safe parking. The place at 1919 Apple Street is not safe parking. Next time I'm up here, I will try to explain to you what safe parking really is. Thank you.
Thank you. One more, Fitzpatrick. Is Fitzpatrick here?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members. I have a mother who's in a nursing home in Wellesley, Massachusetts, and my problem is if she goes in ill health, I'm living in my car right now because unfortunately, homelessness amongst senior citizens is on the rise across the country, in the state of California, but across the country, because we're on fixed incomes and we can't afford the high rents that are existing. And I'm living in my car right now, which is a disgrace in the richest country in the world, and California is the fourth-largest economy in the world. And I would love to have 24-hour safe parking because if I have to leave my car to go fly back east to visit my mom, the rates to store my car are so expensive that I would actually go broke trying to store it somewhere while I flow back east. So, I also echo the words that we need 24-hour safe parking so that I could actually go back and visit my mom before she dies. So, thank you for hearing me. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And let's just go ahead and finish the items on, not on the agenda. Mr. Knott? You're the last.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott. Along the same line, this last couple of weeks, I was humbled. I had shoes on the other feet. I was a couple of weeks without my car. I had car trouble. But instead of taking and trying some conventional ways, I decided to see what it would be like if I actually was without a car. My friends helped out. They helped out, and I was gracious for their assistance. But I found out that like in the Go Oceanside system, it doesn't serve all the But I found out that, like in the Go Oceanside system, it doesn't serve all the time. If you wanted to go to a senior meeting on Tuesdays mornings, you can't. Also, if I wanted to take and go to city council meetings or other community meetings or commission meetings, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Also, there are other restrictions. But one thing I did find is that one of my friends took me to the senior lunch program, and I met a few of the homeless people there and found out that there is no general pass to our homeless in the city to help provide them transportation to the senior program for their lunch, nor is there a pass program for the meal to be given. I think our police and fire and city, you know, council should give to our city employees something like that to help out our fellow citizen, to help out in that. It's a simple thing that can help out. And I think that just a small steps like these things, not only the things of what we can't do, but what we can do, I think is a step forward. And I think that what we can do is start thinking about this type of approach. What can we do? And I encourage you to think on that positive, you know, mission. What can I do? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we are now on the public hearing items, the six o'clock time certain items. We're going to go ahead and start with 34. All right. All right, I am being advised by council that I must go by order as they appear on the agenda, so I'm going to go with 33. Staff recommends city council adopt a resolution approving a vesting tentative map, development plan, and density bonus, and confirm issuance of a categorical exemption per California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA guidelines, Article 19. Section 15332, infill development projects to allow for a 40-lot subdivision and construction of 35 detached, single-family homes, including six affordable units on a vacant 4.05 parcel, probably acre parcel, located on the south side of Kelly Street between Huntsaker Street and Andy Lane. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosure of contacts from the council members regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff and public.
Staff, public email, and a site visit.
Staff and public.
Staff and public.
Staff, public, site visit, and attended the first listening session when the developer was there.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any, do you have any correspondence and our petitions?
All the correspondence we received was sent to council prior to the meeting, and just real quickly, I do have a correction on item number 39 as far as the vote. The vote is actually 3-2 with Robinson and Weiss voting no. Councilmember Robinson meant to vote no on that item.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and allow that, I believe that that has to be done immediately after the vote? Okay, great. So it was corrected immediately afterwards, I would like the record to reflect that. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and start with a presentation by Shannon Vitale, our senior planner.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Council. I'm Shannon Vitale, Senior Planner in the Development Services Department. I'm here tonight to discuss agenda item number 33, the Kelly Street Lagoon Pacific Project. The project consists of a vesting tentative map, a development plan, and a density bonus to construct 35 detached, single-family homes and associated site improvements. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution to approve vesting tentative map T-241, development plan D-24A, and density bonus DB-242, and confirm issuance of a categorical exemption for an infill development project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act to allow for a 40-lot subdivision and construction of 35 detached, single-family homes, including six affordable units. The 4.05-acre project site, which is outlined in red on this slide, is located north of Highway 78 Vista Way on the south side of Kelly Street between Huntsaker Street and Andy Lane. The site, which is currently vacant, is surrounded by single-family residential development to the north, the North Coast United Methodist Church to the west, Highway 78 to the south, and the Pacific Coast Plaza Commercial Center to the east. The property has a general plan land use designation of estate residential B, a zoning designation of residential estate B, and is within the Fire Mountain Neighborhood Planning Area. The project before you tonight requires three entitlements. The first is a vesting tentative map to subdivide the existing parcel into 40 lots. The second is a development plan to allow for the construction of 35 detached, single-family homes, and the third is a density bonus to increase the allowable density on the project site in accordance with state law. By providing six affordable units, three of which would be reserved for very low-income households and three reserved for moderate-income households, the applicant is applying provisions of density bonus law to increase the number of units on-site from 18 to 35. The vesting tentative map would subdivide the existing parcel into 40 lots, with 35 designated as residential lots and five lettered lots for the private road and common open space areas. The residential lots are located along the proposed private street that runs throughout the project site. At 32 to 57 feet in width, the lots range in size from 1,959 square feet to 4,740 square feet. Common area open space lots would be located at the northeast and southeast corners of the property, as indicated on this slide. The development plan would allow for the construction of the 35 detached, single-family homes, which would range in size from 1,794 square feet to 2,360 square feet. Each home would have an attached two-car garage and private rear yard. The six affordable units would be dispersed throughout the project site. As illustrated in the image on this slide, the project has been designed with the proposed homes situated along a private drive. There are no residential lots that would front Kelly Street. There would be 15,669 square feet of common open space areas that include a passive park, a barbecue and seating area, and a pedestrian walkway. The project has been designed to incorporate new trees along the perimeter of the site boundary to help screen the new homes from the existing residences on Kelly Street. In total, 58 new trees would be planted on-site with an emphasis of placing the new trees along the pedestrian and vehicular access points, as well as to the adjacent existing residential properties. There are three floor plans that are proposed. Two of the floor plans would be two-story with a maximum height of 28 feet, while the third floor plan would be three stories and a maximum height of 36 feet. All of the units would have four bedrooms and include street-facing front entries. Primary vehicular access to the site would utilize a new driveway off of Kelly Street. The private road, which has been reviewed and approved by both the Oceanside Fire Department and the city transportation engineering staff, would be a minimum width of 28 feet, with the exception of the portion of roadway fronting lots 34 and 35, which is designated at a minimum width of 21 feet. The site has been designed in consultation with the Oceanside Fire Department and would accommodate fire apparatus trucks and other service vehicles. Each home would have a garage with parking for two vehicles. Additionally, there would be 18 guest parking spaces provided on-site. In total, there would be 146 parking spaces provided, including garage, driveway, and guest parking spaces, resulting in an average of 4.17 parking spaces per unit, which exceeds the minimum parking required for this type of housing project. The proposed architecture is described as modern farmhouse and features a variety of exterior materials, including stucco and wood siding, asphalt shingle roofing, metal railings, and vinyl windows. The homes would be painted in various shades of gray and earth-ton colors and accentuated with decorative shutters, stone and brick veneers, and lapped siding, as illustrated on this slide. A unique feature of the project is a pedestrian-only entry that is planned on the western portion of the site. Pedestrians can access a subdivision off of Kelly Street by way of a pedestrian walkway that would have enhanced paving and a decorative arbor located at the entrance. The walkway would traverse through the project site and connect to the recreational and natural open space areas within the new subdivision. This area would be enhanced with landscaping and new treats. As explained in the staff report, the project is utilizing state density bonus law, specifically AB 1287, which went into effect on January 1st of 2024, and allows for an increase in density from the maximum potential density allowed on the project site, which is 18 units, to 35 units, in exchange for providing six affordable units, three of which are reserved for very low income and three reserved for moderate income. The resulting density of the project is 8.64 dwelling units per acre. This is the first project in Oceanside to utilize this provision of state law. The estimated sales price for the moderate-income homes is between $470,000 to $500,000, and the sales price for the very low-income homes is estimated at $90,000 to $120,000. The market rate units are expected to sell at around $1 million. Since the project is providing six affordable units, the project is eligible for unlimited waivers from development standards. In order to construct the project as proposed, the applicant is requesting waivers from the following development standards: lot size, lot width, setbacks, maximum height of fences and walls, the minimum dimension of usable open space, and the lot coverage. All of these are shown on this slide. Although the project is eligible to receive three concessions or incentives, the applicant has not requested any concessions or incentives as part of this application, and has only requested the waivers from development standards. As outlined on this slide, there are three reasons a local government can deny a density bonus waiver. The first reason is if the project would have a specific adverse impact. A specific adverse impact is defined as a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions. Staff has reviewed the requested waivers and did not determine there would be a specific adverse impact by granting the request. Additionally, the project would not result in adverse impact to historical resources, nor would it be contrary to state or federal law. As described in the Planning Commission staff report, staff reviewed the project for compliance with the general plan and found the project consistent with the goals and policies of the land use element, specifically regarding community enhancement and housing. The project complies with the goals and policies of the housing element because it provides additional affordable housing units to the city's housing stock. Specifically, the project implements housing element policies that encourage the following: a production of affordable housing, providing housing opportunities for low and moderate-income households, and building the affordable housing on-site rather than paying an in-loo fee. Since the project site is located in the REB zoning district, it is subject to the provisions of Article 10 of the zoning ordinance. The project complies with the most development standards for the REB zoning district, and where it does not, as previously discussed, the applicant is seeking waivers of those development standards, which is consistent with state law. The project was also reviewed for compliance with the Climate Action Plan and, as proposed, meets or exceeds all applicable requirements, as shown on this slide. The project has complied with the city's enhanced notification program. A notice of application sign was placed at the project site, and a notice was mailed out to all property owners within a 1,500-foot radius and tenants within a 100-foot radius. Additionally, the applicant held two community outreach meetings at the church located next to the project site. Both of those meetings were well-attended by the public. A summary of the comments received during those meetings was included in the community outreach report. On May 19th, staff brought the project before the planning commission. The planning commission recommended the city council approve the project by a 6-1 vote. During the public testimony portion of the public hearing, the public did raise concerns regarding the proposed density, incompatibility with the existing neighborhood, the number of waivers requested, the reduced lot sizes, parking impacts to the adjacent neighborhoods, a reduction in property values, impacts to habitat, and increased traffic due to the proposed traffic, due to the proposed project. While staff acknowledges the concerns raised by the impotence of the project, pursuant to state law, the city cannot deny a density bonus project waiver unless findings are made that the project would have a specific adverse impact, meaning that there is a significant, quantifiable, direct impact based on objective, written, public health or safety standards or policies. Based on the technical reports prepared for the project, including the local transportation assessment, the air quality and greenhouse gas emission study, and the noise analysis, there are no findings that have been made that the project would have a specific adverse impact to a written public health or safety standard. Additionally, many community members have voiced concerns regarding the lack of sidewalk and have requested that the project is conditioned to install sidewalk throughout the community. However, there is no nexus or a direct connection that requires the developer to make improvements in the community that are not required for project implementation. Existing conditions in the immediate surrounding neighborhoods, including the lack of sidewalks and drainage issues, are not directly attributed to the implementation of the project, and therefore, the developer cannot be required to make sidewalk or drainage improvements throughout the neighborhood. Due to the concerns raised by the public during the planning commission meeting and requests made by the community, the applicant has agreed to install an always stop at the intersection of Cassidy and Soto Street. This condition of approval has been added as condition of approval number 171 in the resolution approving the project. Additionally, following the publication of the city council materials, the applicant has further agreed to another condition of approval to address community concerns regarding site distance at the project's entrance on Kelly Street. The condition of approval will read as follows: the project will install red curb and post no parking signs along a section of the project frontage from the existing project driveway to the existing fire hydrant located to the west. The restriction of on-street parking in this section of roadway would improve site distance at the existing project driveway for eastbound vehicles on Kelly Street and vehicles exiting the project site. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution approving vesting tentative map T-241, development plan D-24A, and density bonus DB-242, and confirm issuance of a categorical exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for an infill development project to allow the 40-lot subdivision and construction of 35 detached, single-family homes, including six set aside as affordable units. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have, and we also have staff from engineering and public works here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vitale. At this time, we also are able to hear from the applicant, who has up to 20 minutes and can reserve some time for rebuttal. Does the applicant wish to address the council at this time?
Yes.
All right. Please approach the podium. State your name for the record.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dave C. I'm the project manager for the Lagoon Pacific Project. First, before starting, I'd like to thank planning staff for their professionalism and patience, and they've been great to work with through this long process, and it's much appreciated. As far as introductions go, as part of the development team joining us tonight is the applicant, the traffic engineer, and the civil engineer. Should you have any questions from them, they can provide some expertise if you need Just for context, the property location, Shannon mentioned it, but we wanted to show this slide to show where it is in context of the neighborhood. It is a vacant lot, four acres, abuts a large shopping center anchored by a Walmart, adjacent to the 78 freeway, and an institutional use, a church. Wanted to highlight that this is essentially the south edge of the Fire Mountain neighborhood, so wanted to kind of put that in context where this actually sits in the neighborhood. It is more on the southerly edge. The developer, Oceanside Community Partners, does have a history of development in the city and built a successful project called Rio Rockwell five years ago. It consists of 104 homes with 50 single-family detached homes and 54 three-story townhomes. It's important to note that the project does include 13 homes that are deemed restricted for low-income affordable housing. These slides show some, or depicts the existing development with some amenities and a park, the three-story townhomes, the detached homes in the upper left, and as part of the project, they did construct a traffic circle adjacent to the site and paid for those improvements. they did construct a traffic circle adjacent to the site and paid for those improvements. As mentioned by the planner, our development team did host two community meetings approximately two and a half months ago. We did provide noticing per the city's noticing requirements. It was held, we believe, at convenient times for the community on a Saturday morning and a Monday evening. Approximately 70 people attended those meetings, and these are just kind of depict the flyers that went out to the neighbor. The neighbors did bring up these issues that they believe impacted the neighborhood: density, traffic, neighborhood accountability, speeding in neighborhoods, density bonus waivers, parking, and privacy and views. And to address those comments, the development team really tried to address to the extent possible, one of which is eliminating one lot and converting it to open space, so the density was reduced a little bit, and increased the percentage of open space on the development site, and it is just a passive open space. It's important to note that there are, if you look in the upper right-hand corner, there are five lots proposed next to the neighbors' homes, and those are all two-story, and those pads for those homes are eight feet lower than the neighbors' yard. The developer completed or hired a consultant to complete a traffic study specifically for Cassidy and Soto, facilitated one-on-one meetings with neighbors and the engineers and development team, and then, as mentioned by Shannon, agreed to a stop sign in Cassidy and Soto, which is a high-traffic intersection, and one resident did request language interpretation. So the applicant hired a certified specialist and provided Spanish-speaking written responses and offered to meet with that resident. As far as amenities goes, there is substantial amount of open space, I believe about 16,000 square feet. There is one lot, one large lot, that will provide amenities such as shaded seating, barbecue area, lawn games, and recreational spaces. There are four other open space lots that are more passive in nature, and there is a decorative element up on Kelly Street where there's a pedestrian entrance, and it will proceed downhill into the project site with stairs, and that includes a decorative arch and some ornamental trees. There was a Planning Commission meeting last month, and they voted 6-1 in favor of the project. These were the issues that were discussed at the meeting: traffic, a walking trail to connect to the Walmart Shopping Center, the parking in the project, and potential for spillover into the neighborhood, and the high-density nature, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit, alleged high-density being proposed with this project. In terms of traffic to address these concerns, the development team did meet with some concerned neighbors, organized some Zoom meetings with the neighbors, commissioned an additional traffic study, and hired a traffic engineer, and he is here tonight to answer questions if you need him. A four-way stop at Soto and Kelly, I believe, that's wrong. Oh, a four-way stop exiting the project site is being proposed to make sure the residents don't unsafely proceed onto Kelly. And the developer did offer to pay for radar speed sign on Kelly Street if acceptable to the public work staff, and a stop sign will be installed down on Soto Street. Terms of the trail, the applicant did initiate dialogue with the adjacent owner, keeping in mind it is a private property owner anchored by a Walmart. There is landscaping designed into the project that would facilitate that, we believe, and then the homeowners association will coordinate the trail connection if it ever comes to fruition. Terms of parking on Kelly Street or potential spillover parking, which we don't believe will occur because, number one, the homeowners association will require parking in the garages, and just to reiterate what was mentioned by Shannon was the project not just meets parking code, but is overdouble what the city's code is in terms of parking. 4.17 spaces is the average being provided, including 18 guest spaces. Wanted to comment on the density comments that came up in the community meetings and the Planning Commission meeting, and just to put this in context, we did some research and found that really high density in the city's code and general plan is more in the 29 to 43 dwelling units per acre. This project is 8.6 dwelling units per acre, which is more in line with the medium-low-density general plan designation. So we believe this is very typical of a single-family development, 8.6 dwelling units per acre. We also believe this is more of a transitional buffer for the neighborhood. Like I said, this is on the south edge of Fire Mountain, and the red shows all commercial zoning, commercial development. North of that is a higher-density multifamily area, and kind of hard to see, but the lower left-hand portion of that aerial is the subject site and the church. And wanted to highlight that that, we believe, is more of a buffer between the single-family neighborhood on Kelly Street and then the freeway to the south. And as mentioned by Shannon, this project does implement density bonus law, which went into effect on January 1st of 2024, specifically AB 1287, which does allow increase in density, which is being implemented in this case. Just wanted to highlight that, and this was authored by David Alvarez, the Assembly member. And in conclusion, just wanted to say we believe this is a project that would benefit the neighborhoods, has quality architecture, there are six affordable housing units, three of which for very low income. It implements state law. We are requesting density bonus waivers, which is allowed by state law, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, or I can come back and respond to other comments from the neighbors.
All right, thank you very much. This is the time for the public to comment on this project. You did not have to, this is a public hearing, so you did not have to actually sign up to speak, but we will be taking first those that did sign up and then asking after that if anyone else wishes to speak. How many do we have that have signed up?
We currently have 11 speakers and four groups.
11 speakers and then four organized presentations.
That is correct.
So the four organized presentations, 10 minutes each, that's 40 minutes, plus 11?
Correct.
Okay. So I am, I'm going to ask you, as to the speakers, we'll first hear from the organized presentations, all right? That might help you with your comments if you are speaking on your own, but I will be asking the 11 speakers who are speaking on their own to limit to two minutes. If you need a little more time, I'll work with you, but I do believe that the four organized presentations may be able to make the case for you in terms of, you know, those 40 minutes. So let's go ahead and get started with the organized presentations. And for the organized presentations, you must have a total of four, so the person who is speaking, plus three. And those three will need to be identified, so you'll just stand up when you hear your name, and then you have to stay for the entire time that that presentation is being made. All right? So let's go ahead and call the first one.
Our first organized presentation is from Bob Ashton, and part of that group is Patty Yant, are you here? Dick Yant, and Amy Ashton. So all members of the organized presentation are here.
All right. Mr. Ashton.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members, and city staff. Not talking to you about sand this evening, that's kind of unique, but I'm talking to you on behalf of the Kelly Street neighborhood there in Fire Mountain, and if you're part of the Kelly Street neighborhood, raise your hand. And we're talking about the proposed Lagoon Pacific development off Kelly Street. Again, speaking on behalf of my concerned neighbors about the lack of adequate attention to significant pedestrian and vehicle safety issues as a result of this project's density, increasing vehicular and pedestrian traffic on our neighborhood streets. One of the things that the city planner spoke about or lacked to speak about, and the developer representative in capturing the community's concerns, safety was never mentioned in either of those presentations, and I want to bring that to your attention. We understand and support the city's commitment to affordable housing and recognize the role of the California Density Bonus Law in advancing that goal, but building more housing, especially high-density housing, must come with an equally strong city commitment to public safety, particularly in established neighborhoods like ours that lack the basic infrastructure such as continuous sidewalks. Neither the developer nor Oceanside Community Partners LLC nor staff have properly captured and addressed the concerns raised by the residents regarding the Lagoon Pacific project. Both parties to continue to rely on the DBL provisions to justify the project's scale without responding to serious safety and infrastructure implications that result from this proposed project's increased density. The California Housing Defense Fund letter, which is right here, which was sent to our City Planning Commission, states multiple times how a city cannot disapprove a project based on density bonus, but cities may use and address specific findings of health and safety hazards as conditions of approval. The city needs to stop running away scared with the density bonus law, and they're starting to addressing things like safety and other critical city issues when these density bonus projects come up. During two developer-hosted committee meetings held in late March and during the May 19th Planning Commission hearing, numerous Kelly Street neighbor residents expressed concerns about how the project will negatively impact pedestrian safety, traffic safety, and the surrounding neighborhood. Despite these concerns, the project was advanced without integration of the community's feedback. Let me be clear, none of the staff reports or documents provided on this project include the local traffic assessment do not meaningful address either pedestrian or vehicle safety. This is the number one issue in our community raised during multiple meetings and surveys. We have schoolchildren walking these streets, we have families biking, many older adults, I walk my dog, I walk my grandkids, we all use these streets for access, and they don't have continuous sidewalks right now. If this development continues, left unmitigated, it'll make it worse. Why hasn't the city conducted a proper neighborhood pedestrian and vehicle safety study based on the increased density of this project? That has not been done. Sidewalks. There are no continuous or complete sidewalks on Kelly, Soto, Hunsacker, or Cassidy adjacent to this project. This is unacceptable, especially given that this area serves a lot of walkers to and from school, children and parents, seniors who are out for walks, and cyclists sharing the road. We ask that the city require the installation of continuous ADA-compliant sidewalks on all four of these streets as a condition of project approval. This is not a luxury, this is a matter of basic safety and accessibility. Have any of you been up to Kelly Street and Soto Street? I invite you to come on up, come in the morning. I'll bring a lawn chair out for you, you can watch the cars transitioning in and out of there, and the cars even on Kelly Street, two cars can't go side by side with cars parked on Kelly Street. We kind of have to move a little bit and let each other pass there, but we're going to double the density of automobiles on the same street. Let me show you a picture of that. Here's Kelly Street looking west, and this is just to the west of the exit right there. You can see where the project would be coming out, and we have these intermittent sidewalks and all the way down to Soto Street. Here's Soto Street. I call it papers, know and love. That's one of the silliest corners in the whole city. That yellow striping actually stops once you get onto Kelly Street, and that turns the weirdest turn in the city. You really can't navigate it very quickly or very safely, so that's another issue, but we're going to double the density on that street and that corner. Not acceptable. There's a blind hill that is a big issue that coming out of the project, and this is again looking west, but this is quite the issue coming out of the project. That's the hill, and I showed you the other part of Kelly Street looking west, so as you come right out of the project, you may or may not see cars coming over the hill if you're trying to come out of the project, turning left or turning right. So those are significant issues. The blind hill, the entrance and exit to the development is located directly on the blind hill. It's a well-known hazard to drivers and pedestrians alike. Allowing full turning movements in and out of the density development is a recipe for collision and near misses. If the entrance must remain on Kelly, we strongly urge that it could be a right turn-in, right turn-out entrance only. Additionally, we strongly recommend creating emergency access at West Fist Away if possible or creating the main access at West Fist Away, which would eliminate all these mitigation issues and have an emergency access on Kelly Street. There was a speaking issue about drainage and street geometry, and that's down at the Soto-Kelly corner. It needs to be widened to accommodate safe turning movements and improve the sightlines. It's a very blind corner there when you're walking or riding. It also suffers from poor drainage, which adds to the hazard. Hunsacker has a significantly strange dip there as well, and that's dangerous and should be resolved. Speed control measures such as radar signs should be implemented on Kelly and Cassidy to calm traffic, and it's what a heavy residential zone. In summary, the neighborhood is not ready to absorb the negative pedestrian traffic impacts of this development without implementation of significant safety measures. These are not extreme requests, they're basic, common sense, as someone said earlier. They reflect the lived experience of the people who already live here and use the streets daily. Please don't ignore the voices of the community on this issue. You have the responsibility and the authority to postpone the decision and not adopt the resolution about this development until the following are completed. We request the city conduct a proper safety study of the impact of the proposed project's high-density on the neighborhood and the areas of the pedestrian and vehicle safety, identifying critical safety mitigation measures to be incorporated as conditions of approval of the project. We further request you properly address the requested project mitigation measures cited in our community letter, which I sent you on the 16th of June, which was a result of our community meeting. We took a survey, those are the top 10 items in that that we're asking for, and we request those be incorporated or considered for incorporation as measures of conditions of approval for this project. We're not opposed to development, we're not opposed to affordable housing. We are simply asking for the city to fulfill its obligation of the public interest and require that the project be built responsibly and safely with the right infrastructure to support it. This is one of the first steps to ensure that Oceanside remains not only a growing city, but a safe and livable one for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next is the Lisa Sargent organized presentation, excuse me, the Diane Carrunos organized presentation, and you've got three other people, if you want to go ahead and call them out.
Diane, start making your way down to the podium here, and we have Lisa Sargent, Devin Rossi, and Mary Wyck Gennett. I apologize if I mispronounced her last name. Oh, there you are. All members of the group are here.
Thank you. Do you need any help? If you need, if you have, if you're going to be using, let me just say, if you're going to be using, coming back and forth, we should give you the mic. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
And if you want, you can move the microphone closer to your, there you go, so we can hear you over the air conditioning.
I'm Greek, so I know how to speak loud and clearly too.
Oh, good.
Okay, so my name is Diane Carrunas-Holsing. Thank you to the members of the council for allowing me to testify here tonight. I will begin with our construction concerns. As you can see, number one, parking. If you were to approve this project, we require an agreement in writing that the construction workers will only park on the construction site. This would also include all material delivery vehicles as well. Other residents live- Other residents living near projects in Fire Mountain area reported that cement trucks lined up along their streets waiting all day long to enter their sites. They were idling, ignoring the restriction of commercial vehicles from idling for more than five minutes. These restrictions are to apply strictly to construction workers and any of their affiliates of the development. Furthermore, no restrictions will be accepted to the residents and their guests of Kelly Street who utilize street parking currently or during the project. The road deterioration. Road deterioration from large construction vehicles that will frequently be traveling in and out of the construction site and along all adjacent roads must be addressed. One pass of a semi-trailer theoretically causes as much highway asphalt deterioration as 1,750 to 2,925 passes by car. Because of this, we request that the developer cover expenses for repaving all adjacent roads to the construction site. Noise and hours of construction site. We would request a commitment in writing that the workers do not show up or start work before 7:00 AM, including not idling on streets before 7:00 AM. Also, they adhere to the fact that the construction work is not permitted on nationally-recognized holidays. Fourth item, dust and debris. Another concern of ours is the dust. We would request that they spray as often as needed to comply with OSHA requirements. Also, assurance they will be using wheel wash stations and sweeping nearby roads to prevent dust and debris from spreading. We need this assurance designated to the crew to mitigate debris, that there will be a designated crew that will mitigate debris from the site daily. Following these guidelines, they will minimize dust and debris, protecting both their workers and the surrounding environment. The utilities. We request that they bury utilities during sidewalk installation within three miles of the construction site in all directions. We insist that all utility lines be buried, and do they already have a U-plan set for this project? Now, my own concerns. My own concerns are, and a question to all of you, is whether anyone involved in this project is getting political support from anyone currently in office. Are any of you council members receiving funding from any investor or organization interested in housing development in Oceanside? The developer saying that he would put in an all-way stop sign at Cassidy and Soto will do nothing to mitigate the issue that will impact those of us who are living on Kelly Street and other adjacent streets. It has the potential for a minimum of at least a 70-car increase coming in and out on our tiny little street, which is very narrow. And the dip at Huntsaker and Kelly already poses a risk, people are constantly scraping, I live right on the corner of Huntsaker and Kelly, and constantly people scrape and bottom out at that, and to think of 70 more cars coming in and out of there. Every time I pull out of my driveway, I have to look for cars coming over the hill, this is, I mean, this is a big cause of danger for me coming out of my own driveway. And I say just because the law allows them to increase density doesn't make it right. I've been an Oceanside resident in my home on Kelly Street for nearly 21 years. I take great pride in my neighborhood, and I love my neighbors. We have supported each other through illness, loss, and shared in life's joyous moments together. When I lost my husband in 2020, my neighbors were by my side supporting me and continue to do so to this day. This is truly a special neighborhood, but I fear the Kelly Street Lagoon Pacific project will negatively alter the character and camaraderie of our neighborhood forever. As a reminder, the city should be advocating for the community and our concerns. In closing, I would like to request that the council postpone their decision about this development approval until a more equitable agreement to implement mitigation measures are reached between the development and the Fire Mountain Kelly Street community. I'm asking these questions of you because there's an election next year, and the decisions you make and how you vote are going to be remembered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, the next group, the next group is Scott Luskey. Did you want to go ahead and call out the three other names?
Janine Wilson, Paul Wilson, and Rick Chambers.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and City Staff, my name is Scott Luskey. I live at 1602 Kelly Street, which is about 200 feet from the planned project site. As you introduced my group, they live very close to me and have helped contribute to my comments here. I moved here after retiring from the Navy because we loved Oceanside and specifically the Fire Mountain community. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of California and currently work in a public agency, so I understand the challenges of adhering to laws, regulations, and other mandates while supporting the interests of the public you serve. And specifically, I understand and support the state's and the city's commitment to affordable housing and recognize the role of the California Density Bonus Law in advancing that goal. However, those initiatives should not adversely impact public safety as this project does. And I know that there were some remarks earlier by city staff and by the developer that said that there was no nexus from this project to safety issues. I think the presenters before me and my comments hopefully will tie those together. I've walked my dog and my now 10-year-old daughter on Kelly and the surrounding streets nearly every day since we moved here eight years ago. With the lack of sidewalks and crosswalks, as well as the street configurations in the neighborhood, which, again, some of my neighbors have talked through and all talked through, are very unique and currently dangerous and only get compounded by the additional traffic, we've had numerous close calls with vehicles that are speeding, or drivers not paying attention, or just the configuration of the streets make it dangerous. Particularly dangerous include the intersection of Cassidy and Soto, that's been brought up, and that actually is going to be addressed at least for the pedestrian crossing there and the four-way stop, which is, will affect that area but not the Kelly Street area. The intersection of Soto and Kelly, Bob brought that up as well, but I'm going to talk a little bit from a slightly different angle. Bob showed this intersection from the other direction, I'm going to show it from the direction that if we're walking on the street, because there is no sidewalks here, and we're trying to come around the corner, we can't see to the left, and so vehicles come flying around that corner, we have no option but to try and jump out of the way, and you can't see with both the fence and the vegetation there, and then the frequent standing water there only compounds the problem. Additionally, across the street from where you're looking, you can't see it, again, neither can you see it if you're walking, is the entrance to the church. And so whether you're driving or walking approaching this intersection from Soto Street, it's extremely dangerous. Adding another 70 vehicles, whatever the number of vehicles it ends up being, will for sure only compound that problem. The second, the second area again that Bob, and showed a picture of is the hill, and this first picture shows the angle coming essentially from my driveway, so we're looking east, and the project entrance is over the hill to your right. It's 200 feet away, you can't see it. Again, you've got vehicles driving even at the speed limit of 25 miles an hour, you cannot see the entrance, it's 200 feet away. You add 70 vehicles coming out of that entrance, that's going to be dangerous. So to me, the safety issues with that project, this project, are the entrance and the added vehicles on our streets, and especially the construct of the entrance. The constraint to potentially right turns only will assist that because now you're not coming up against traffic, it won't completely solve it, but it's definitely an improvement. This is a photo looking the other way, so this is essentially a look up the hill from the project-proposed entrance site up the hill. Again, 200 feet away, you cannot see my driveway. As vehicles pull out of this driveway, there's going to be cars coming over that hill, again, going anywhere from 25 to however fast they're speeding, and those vehicles coming out there aren't going to see it. I'll go back to my picture here a second ago, where the point came up about the proposal to red-mark the street. What they're talking about is the section essentially just past where that white car is on your right, there's a fire hydrant, down to the project entrance, and red-striping that will do nothing for safety. You still can't see over the hill. You can move those cars, but that's not really the issue, and what it does effectively is then impact our neighbors and their ability to park on the street. None of the documentation provided by the developer or the city staff for this project to include the local traffic assessment meaningfully addresses vehicle and pedestrian safety, which as Bob and others have said, is really our number-one issue raised during the meetings and the surveys. I was at one of the two committee meetings, in fact, I was in the picture that was shown, where the developer conducted, and aside from the proposed improvements to Cassidy and Soto and the pavement of Kelly Street, none of the safety issues we brought up have been addressed meaningfully. Other nearby developments, including Ocean Creek with their 295 units going down on Crouch Street, 26 Tides, Whaley and Huntsaker, Avocata Road, et cetera, compound the safety concerns since much of that traffic is funneled through Cassidy and Huntsaker, including many who use the local streets or those local streets to cut through to other locations. A comprehensive traffic study should be conducted to identify and mitigate impacts from the resulting higher volumes of traffic. There are various types of different traffic studies. The local traffic transportation assessment completed for this project is based simply on projected changes in volume of traffic, but does not adequately address the unique conditions of the streets in this area. In addition to the specific dangerous locations I mentioned, Kelly Street is narrow, again as Bob mentioned, with parking on both sides, no centerline striping, and very limited sidewalks. Additionally, the local transportation assessment that was done contains inaccuracies about the existing roadways and sidewalks, including statements about sidewalks such as a sidewalk and pedestrian facilities are provided on both the north-south, north and south sides of Cassidy Street leading onto Soto Street. Additional statements, sidewalk and pedestrian facilities are provided along both sides of Kelly Street west of the project driveway. The third statement, sidewalk and pedestrian facilities are provided on the east side of Soto Street between Cassidy Street and Crim Place. Those statements do not accurately depict the fact that sidewalks are only present in portions of those locations. Very misleading. The developer's community outreach plan states that Kelly Street, which is adjacent to the project site and church, will be improved per city requirements. The only improvement that the project documentation is that one that I mentioned where they said they're going to red-stripe the street, and like I mentioned, that is not going to improve safety at all. And this indicates, even though that they mention that and it doesn't improve safety, this indicates that both the developer and the city recognize, even though they didn't say it, that there are safety issues caused by having traffic for 35 homes using a single-access point on the blind side of a hill. The so-called improvement, though, as I mentioned, will only negatively impact the current residents and will do nothing to fix the safety issue. A true traffic impact study is crucial for ensuring that the development is safe and sustainable. In addition, for the traffic volume and flow, a complete traffic impact study should include detailed assessments of traffic impact analysis, including the traffic conditions with accumulated development in the area, measuring existing volumes, speeds, and patterns, and determining how it will affect the current traffic and resident. It should include a safety analysis to include safety concerns and proposed measures to mitigate them, such as street repairs, road widening, traffic signal signage, traffic calming devices, pedestrian crossings, et cetera, and ensuring that access and egress points are safe and efficient. The traffic impact study could also be sent out for public comment to ensure appropriate issues and mitigations are addressed. In closing, we support responsible development that does not adversely impact public health and safety, which this project will do without the city ensuring appropriate mitigation. We request that the city council postpone the decision on this development's approval until those safety concerns are properly addressed and coordinated between the developer, the city, and the community, and then be included in the conditional approvals for this project. We have to live with these safety concerns, but the city has the authority and responsibility to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. The final organized presentation. Is it Heather Gibson, one?
Heather Gibson.
Could you also name off the other three?
Maritza Alfred.
I'm speaking.
Oh, you're speaking, okay. But Heather Gibson, are you, oh, she's in the back, okay. Darrell Dick, and Rex Alfred. All members are present.
Oh, so it's the Maritza Alfred Gibson group. So, two people? Oh, okay, Maritza, okay, great.
It's actually Maritza, but thank you.
Maritza. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Sanchez and staff. My name is Maritza Alfred, and I'm a resident of the Pacific Lagoon Kelly Street neighborhood. I'm here to speak on behalf of my community regarding the serious concerns we have about the proposed development project. Our current neighborhood consists of 37 homes on 11 acres. The proposed development seeks to double the density to 35 homes on only four acres without alignment with our semi-rural infrastructure. This is not appropriate for our area, which lacks sidewalks, as you've heard earlier, has limited street width, rural roads, and no commercial services. And I'll add this, seen this a few times. Our parking and traffic concerns, as we mentioned, overflow parking is already a problem today, and this project will make it worse. How will you mandate parking in this community? Will residents be allowed to park overnight in their driveways? Will these homes be sold as residence, investment rentals, or corporate rentals? If this project is to address the sitting housing crisis, no corporate rental ownership for five years post-stale to support resident stability. We would like to ask for HOA CCNRs that can mandate parking in driveways or garage as well as living in a home for the first couple of years before renting. This should be included in the project's proposal before it's approved. Kelly Street is not wide enough to support two-way traffic with street parking. Large vehicles cannot safely navigate that steep, narrow intersection at Kelly and Huntsaker as Diane mentioned, we see Amazon, FedEx, UPS bottom out all day, every day. Red curbing Kelly will remove even more parking from current residents, and the entrance bottleneck near the church and preschool will become even more dangerous. We're asking to reassess Class 32 exemptions, specifically the requirements that state approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic. There are safety risks, as we've mentioned. This project significantly increases risk for children, pedestrians, and existing residents, many of whom are seniors in our community. There's been no formal safety analysis of the increased traffic upon the existing neighborhood. City staff have stated there were reviews performed by police and fire, but would not provide documented evaluations. The obscure entrance to the preschool at Kelly and Soto, which Scott just shared, is already a safety hazard. The increased traffic from this development will exacerbate that blind curve and this problem. The planning staff says state density bonus law limits their ability to object it, but ignores the statement regarding safety mitigation measures that are allowed and necessary. As elected officials, you have the duty to- As elected officials, you have the duty to protect public safety, not just enable developers. There's a mismatch with the community. The project has contiguous sidewalks, as you've seen, parking rules, and a private HOA, none of which exists in the surrounding area. Project improvements stop at the property line. This is an urban density forced into a semi-rural environment. It simply does not fit our neighborhood as designed. Developer accountability. The developer Oceanside Community Partners LLC had a suspended business license during the Planning Commission May 19 meeting. That decision should be null and void. Furthermore, their community outreach report is misleading and did not include resident safety concerns. There was no follow-up, no transparency, and no trust earned. Additionally, planning staff attended the March 31 community outreach meeting and was aware of the safety concerns raised by the residents. Yet they did not question the community outreach report or reach out to the neighborhood. They had knowledge and failed to act on our neighborhood's behalf. In closing summary, we are concerned about unmanageable density, unsafe patterns, increased risk to children and pedestrians, lack of required safety analysis, misinformation in public documents, a developer with questionable conduct, a city staff that seems to represent the developer and not the residents. We ask the city council to pause, demand a full independent safety review, and stand with the residents of this community. As elected officials, you have a responsibility to serve as advocates for public interest. This includes ensuring that mitigation measures are implemented to preserve and enhance pedestrian safety, traffic safety, and neighborhood character. As stated in Bob Ashton's letter dated June 16, we are seeking safety, both traffic and pedestrian, traffic control, access on Kelly and adjacent streets, emergency access, project density reduction, project changes, emergency vehicle access assurances, construction impact mitigations, and ongoing transparency throughout ongoing community advisory meetings. We urge the city not to approve this project until comprehensive safety mitigation measures are formally included. Safety concerns raised by the community have not been adequately addressed. The proposed Lagoon Pacific project, seeking a 100% density bonus under the California Density Bonus Law, DBL, would double the immediate neighborhood's population and vehicle traffic. While the DBL limits the city's discretion in some areas, it does not absolve the city of its duty to protect public safety. We are not opposed to development. In fact, we support reasonable, well-planned growth that benefits all Oceanside residents. In closing, I'd like to request the council again to postpone the decision about this development until more equitable agreements are reached between the developer and the Fire Mountain community. Thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go through the individuals, starting with Mr. Tony D'Agostino, followed by Richard Wykanot, thank you, Wykanot, and Sharon Bennett, each two minutes. If you need more time, I'll work with you.
Yeah, thank you. I'd written this for three minutes, but I'll try to rush it. Thank you for having me here. I know there are many people that weren't able to make it or couldn't make it tonight that all represent voters in Oceanside. This 35-unit development comprises three or four-bedroom houses, each with four parking spaces, including its attached garage. This could result in approximately 100 additional vehicles traveling daily on Huntsaker and Soto Streets, two streets on to which Kelly Street empties. Please also consider, there's 295 units currently under construction at the north end of Huntsaker Street near Crouch and Oceanside Boulevard. It is likely that these residents will use Huntsaker Street to reach the I-5 freeway via California or Cassidy Streets that don't have any traffic lights, rather than navigating the five traffic lights from the apartment complex down Oceanside Boulevard to the five. That's tremendous amount of vehicles coming up this way. Within the last few months, there were just eight multifamily houses completed on Huntsaker and Whaley Street. That's in addition to this other stuff on either end of Huntsaker. Huntsaker Street sees a significant pedestrian activity, including children walking, bicycling, being pushed in carriages, et cetera, who will all face increased danger due to the rise in vehicle traffic. Those residents from the new development traveling to Walmart, where businesses on Vista Way will use Huntsaker to California to Ridgely Streets to get there, which would route them passing by two schools on California Avenue. All these factors contribute to an increase in traffic and safety concerns. The best and most cost-effective thing to do that will, I think, satisfy just about everybody is to reroute the entrance of the development. Instead of onto Kelly Street, make it to Vista Way. It'll be going in a commercial area and just have a fire entrance onto Kelly Street in case the fire trucks need to get into the development. But if you put the entrance onto Vista Way below it, that they were talking about a walking path, make that a driving path, because then you don't have any of the traffic concerns in Fire Mountain area. And I'm sorry, real quick, two quick things. On the council meeting, the planning board meeting, I'm sorry, a couple of the board members mentioned, you know, this doesn't really fit Fire Mountain, but you know, the way how the laws are written. And then it was also said by one of the council members that Huntington Beach fought this density issue and they won. He goes, and we should do that, too. And they also mentioned that, there were two members that mentioned during that planning board meeting, that this development does not fit Fire Mountain. It's just not, it's just not in par with everything else that's up there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Richard Wykanot, followed by Sharon Bennett. Ms. Bennett, you can wait at the other podium. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor, thank you, council members. My name is Richard Wykanot. I'm going to take it from a different angle. I live on Cassidy Street, not on Kelly Street. I've lived there for over 32 years, and I took a radar gun and mounted it last week and shot 100 cars. Not one car was doing the speed limit. Average was 38.7, with some cars going over 50 miles an hour down Cassidy Street. Safety is a huge concern. Now, I know on Cassidy Street, the city owns 40 feet on either side of the median, and there's interrupted sidewalk. We should continue the sidewalks. We have three major schools. We have South, South Oak, Palm Crest, and Lincoln. The safety is unbelievable. I see mothers in their shopping with their babies going off the curb, onto the street, back onto the curb, back onto the sidewalk where it's now continues. It's just not safe. Also, fire safety. With now Proposal 38, Agenda 38 tonight, we need to talk about one egress into this development. And these homes are only going to be four feet apart, four feet setback. In light of the Palisades and Eaton fires, we're talking about a major catastrophe. If one house goes, they're all going to go. And there's only one way in for the firefighters to fight this fire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sharon Bennett, followed by Jeff Bennett. Go ahead.
I'm Sharon Bennett. I live on 1531 Kelly Street, and I differ that I have enjoyed my privacy for 35 years without a sidewalk, so I do not want a sidewalk in front of my house. But I am more fearful of driving on Kelly due to the blind hill. So I would like to ask that a stop sign be required at the exit onto Kelly from their development, not just a good-face stop sign, but one in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Bennett, followed by Ken Layton.
I'm Jeff Bennett. I live on 1531 Kelly Street also. Most of my topics have been spoken about tonight, except for some of the infrastructure with concrete trucks and stuff coming up the road. We have like valve cans with all our water, gas, and everything on the street. I believe that with the weight of the trucks, we're going to have issues. All the houses on the south side of Kelly are all lower than the street, and if we do have any water problems with valves, we're going to have flooding or things like that. We want to have that accounted for. I'm also worried about the parking in the facility that, in the housing tract that they're doing. They're going to do a green space. I believe that should be more parking for there. When we talked the first time, they said the HOA would not allow the cars to park in the driveways. Tonight, I asked the contractor, he said yes. I'd like to see that in writing when they do build the homes or if we go that route. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Layton, followed by Helmut Igel. Thank you. Go ahead.
I would have loved to have been a fly on the wall when they decided what to call this obscenely high-density monstrosity. They could have called it Sardine Summit, or they could have called, because it abuts 78 and I-5 and all that particular, it's going to envelop the people who live there, they could have called it Auschwitz Point. Or they could have just called it what it looks like, and that is Tenement Ghetto Estates. The fact is, no matter how much lipstick you slather on this pig, Lagoon Pacific is still going to ruin the neighborhood forever. It's going to change the future of Fire Mountain, and it might as well be comped, because it's going to be gone forever. And land use is the most important thing a city council will ever get to vote on, and no state, nobody is making you do anything you don't want to do. Your hands are not tied. You can vote yes or no on this, and I suggest you do the right thing. This development is shite. You know it, the developer knows it, and if you reject it, I guarantee he's going to come back with a reasonable development. This small-time developer does not have an army of attorneys, and he doesn't automatically get to do whatever he wants just because he proposes it, and he's got someone on staff saying, oh, we've got to do it because the state tells us. Well, the state doesn't tell you that you have to do this. You get to vote, and you can vote tonight and reject it. Please do so. And so I think I've said everything I need to say, and there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Helmut Igel, followed by Lisa Klein.
Good evening, city council. Have you seen the traffic on the freeway tonight? That's just not a minor inconvenience, it's a warning sign. I'm Helmut Igel, a homeowner at 1818 Soto Street. That's my front yard. And I'm speaking on behalf of my Fire Mountain neighbors, who are unanimously opposed to the proposed 35-home Lagoon project. Have you seen the area? There is no dense, ugly housing there right now. Beautiful area, and we would like to keep it that way. This developer is using the state density bonus law to jam 35 homes on 4.2 acres, and that's nearly double the 18 homes our zoning allows. Sacramento is telling us what to do, and that's not right. We're talking about eight homes per acre, including 16-three-story units, squeezed into a peaceful neighborhood of single-story homes and spacious lots. This isn't just too dense, it's dangerous. Kelly Street is narrow with only one way in or out. The project is overwhelming, overwhelms the traffic near I-5 and 78, causes overflow parking, strains schools, utilities, and emergency response, and it sits just yards from the sensitive Buena Vista Lagoon. Density bonus is being misused, and it should be focused on inland San Diego. It was meant for urban infill not to cram high rises into coastal neighborhoods. Even city leaders agree. Planning Commissioner Kevin Dodd voted against this project citing unsafe pedestrian access. Mayor Esther Sanchez has rejected similar density bonus proposals over excessive waivers in building heights. We're just not guessing what will happen, we've seen it before. Just last month, my wife won Oceanside's Best Garden Award. You couldn't do that if you didn't have space. We urge you to stop large investors from ruining our neighborhood who get their permits then resell. Reject this density bonus request, limit the project to 12 to 20 homes in line with zoning, and require a full environmental study impact zone. But Fire Mountain is in this place. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you. Lisa Klein, followed by Trina Priest.
Me? Hi. Hi, my name is Lisa Klein, and I live on Huntsaker Street. I am here to kindly remind all of you, your duty to me, your constituent, who will be adversely affected by the Kelly Street project. There are, in fact, circumstances when a city may deny approval of a proposed development under the density bonus law. A circumstance that is relevant here is when the development would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety, as set forth in Government Code Section 65915D1 and 65589.5D2. Nothing in the government code requires the city to act as a mouthpiece or a rubber stamp for the developer, nor should it. Elected city council members are deemed to be the voices of their constituents. It is therefore not the city's duty to advocate on behalf of the developer. Rather, the city council must listen to the public health and safety concerns raised by their constituents in general, and the residents affected by the project in particular. The Fire Mountain residents have specific identifiable safety concerns regarding this project. These specific concerns, which have been brought to the city's attention, require the city to conduct an independent analysis of whether or not the proposed development will have a significant, quantifiable, direct and unavoidable impact on public health or safety. In other words, the city has a duty to subject the developer's representations to independent analysis and testing for the safety of its constituents impacted by the project, and not to act as a mouthpiece for the developer. Otherwise, the city must grant a continuance so we, the residents, may further gather data to address these concerns, which the city and developer have failed to address. Only this will comport with the city's duty, the city's duty under the Brown Act to facilitate public participation in all phases of local government decision-making. I have one more paragraph. Accordingly, request is made to deny the project outright for failure to address the impact this project will have on public health and safety, or continue the hearing in order to properly evaluate the impacts the proposed development will have on public health and safety. Thank you so much, and thank you for all.
Thank you. Trina Priest, followed by Elton Melendez. Trina? Okay, not, she's not here. How about Elton Melendez? Followed by Diane Nygaard.
Hello, thank you for your time. I actually did want to talk about a different development. I just couldn't find it on the speaker's queue for the Mission Ave. Is that okay?
Mission what?
The Mission Ave development. I couldn't find it on the speaker's queue.
Oh, Mission Avenue?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda.
Oh, I got a notice for Wednesday, June 18, at 6:00 p.m., from my current place of work, Riza Beach, where.
I don't know if, okay, someone will be speaking with you, okay? Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Diane Nygaard, followed by Martha Cass.
Honorable Mayor and Councilwoman Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calaveras. This is certainly not the worst density bonus project that's come before you, but it is one more of a long list of projects that cause adverse impacts on our community and still don't give us the number of affordable housing units that we need. For the last two years, we have watched this council approve project after project and say, oh, we have no choice about this. We don't accept that excuse. We think you do have a choice. We expect you to be proactive for the people of Oceanside. Specific things that you can do. Where are those objective standards adopted by this organization to address the public health and safety issues raised by this community and numerous others? The law says you can adopt those standards, and you can use them in your decision-making. There's, of course, our legislative fixes, but there are also things fully within local control that can be done to reduce the impacts on our community. Our park impact fees haven't been updated for 30 years. Our traffic standards shouldn't have left this project saying, we'll voluntarily address these issues. They should have been obligated to do them. That's your ordinance, that's something you can take charge of. We ask you to be proactive and put the people of Oceanside first. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Cass? Is there Martha, Martha Cass?
Luckily, we're setting a timer. Okay, I see it. I'm Martha Cass. I live on Kelly Street, I've lived there all my life. I live at the property that is the pathway, I guess. I apologize ahead of time for not being at the meetings prior to this. Walking in the building, I thought I'd want to go into policy, and then sitting here, I realized it's not my thing. I, I am a registered nurse, I have a bachelor's degree in nursing, I'm working on a graduate program. When this is all over, I'd like to work with the city of Oceanside on a safety campaign for Oceanside. I'm not really sure why we're even talking about 34 new homes and eight low-income homes. Literally, I'm working on a graduate program, you guys. I can't afford to live there. I live on Kelly Street, I was born on Camp Pendleton, I've lived there all my life. I can't afford to live in the low-income housing. Okay, my time's up. I have done my due diligence. Somebody who knows somebody that knows Rick came to my house, left a message. I left a message for Shannon. I live on Kelly Street right now, I'm, I just learned that I am being cyber-stalked. So I think before we talk about building homes in my backyard, I would like to talk about keeping us in Oceanside safe, and talk about a safety plan. That's my favorite subject, I'm a registered nurse, and I live there, and I missed all two of those community meetings, all two of them, maybe because I was working around a travel assignment. So I have a lot to say about safety. I grew up playing on those streets in Oceanside. I just ask that you put yourselves in our shoes that live there. I grew up catamaranning on skateboards, riding bicycles, from the top of Kelly Street. I love what my neighbors say. They told me that, you know, the developers are reasonably nice, and I appreciate that, but I think we have a long way to go on safety, and I live there. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is a time for the council to hear from the public. You did not have to have signed up. If you wish to address this item, please approach the podium, and you have up to, state your name, and you have to, up to three minutes to speak.
To all my Fire Mountain brothers and sisters.
Oh, two minutes.
I used to reside there at 1606 Kurtz for 27 years with my beloved Jane, until doctors gave her too much effort and blew her heart out and killed her. And then, of course, her three daughters, by her first husband, took the house and put me in the street. But I tell you what, my going roller skating with my granddaughters in that area, it has to be safe for our grandchildren to skate with their grandpa, has to be safe for me to walk my dog around the area. And so I've listened to all these folks from Huntsaker and Kelly and various places, and they're absolutely right. This, this place up here is special. Fire Mountain is a special place for special people. We're very, we're very good people up there, we were good people up there. All my, all my neighbors were great people. We could go out there and do Halloween without any, any worries. It was safe, and we'd like to keep it that way, even though I don't reside there anymore. I love Fire Mountain.
Thank you. Any, anyone else wishing to address this item? Please state your name, and you have up to two minutes to speak.
Yes, hi, thank you for the time. My name is Rick Chambers, I live at 1524 Kelly Street, I've been there since 1979. Raised two boys, have eight grandkids that visit, drive up and down that hill.
Can you put the, speak into the mic?
Sorry.
No one heard you. Let's just go ahead and get you restarted.
Should I start again? Do you hear any of that? Start again? Okay. My name is Rick Chambers, I live at 1524 Kelly Street. I've lived there since 1979. I've raised two sons, and I have eight grandchildren that frequently visit me. Four of the grandchildren traverse Kelly Street and, as well as Huntsaker to get to their house, they live on Woodbine. I always worry about them going upward, up and over the street, over the grate at the top of the hill. It's blind, and if the kids were to get out there at all with their scooters or anything, there could be a problem. There are no contiguous sidewalks through that area, there's no way for them to take a sidewalk from our house to theirs, anywhere through there. That won't happen. I also wanted to talk about the ADUs, the building density laws, 1257 or whatever it is, and the original building density bonus laws. Something that we've got going on is our traffic. They mentioned redlining the top of the street. Well, we have quite a bit of people that need parking in our area. The same laws that are demanding us to take in another 35 houses have also created a real parking problem. I can put onto my house an ADU, and I don't have to add any additional parking space. I built an ADU on the back of my house. Fortunately, it's just my mom. It could be a family, it could be two people, that'd be two more cars. Then I can turn my garage into a junior ADU, and I can get, without adding any parking again. So right now, I could, I could effectively put easily four more cars from my house because of the bonus density laws. That could happen to all these people. Nobody can afford where we live, we're all trying to find a way to make it live, we're trying to provide affordable housing. By having ADUs is helping. My mother lives with me. So my point is that these same laws, there's a two-edged sword here, and they aren't, the laws do not make sense, they don't overlap well. So I would ask you to consider all the parking and the problems, it's a narrow street, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Please approach the podium and speak for, state your name and speak for up to two minutes.
It'll probably be less. My name is Patty Ant, and I didn't intend on speaking, but I, one of my main concerns is, besides the safety, which is to me obvious, and we live right in front of the development. So our driveway, which we use today.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, were you part of a?
A group. Oh, I can't do this.
Right.
Never mind, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council that wasn't part of the organized presentations that would like to speak on this? Please state your name, sir, and you have up to two minutes.
My name's Jim Molenex, I live at 1588 Kelly Street. You've heard a lot of great information from both sides of this discussion, a lot of technical stuff, but something just doesn't smell right. From the arched walkway that drops you straight into a street without any sidewalks, so where are those pedestrians supposed to go? Down the street? To the covered barbecue that is directly over the high-pressure gas line that feeds most of coastal Oceanside? I don't hear any of that. I hear a lot of, "Hey, we're gonna do this, we'll put in a stop sign for you," but what are you gonna do if you take down half of Oceanside? Drilling in pile for your shade.
Can you address the council, because they can't hear you when you do that?
Drilling in the piers for the shade cover at the barbecue when you penetrate the high-pressure gas line. What happens then? There's a lot of issues that aren't being addressed here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing, and ask the applicant if he wishes to address the council again on rebuttal. You have how many minutes?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, how many, 10 minutes?
10 minutes and?
37 seconds. I'm just waiting for the clock to reach 37.
Yeah, hold on, please.
Yeah.
We're almost there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to rebut.
10:37, and if you are able to respond to some of the concerns and/or do something else, that would be wonderful.
Yes. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. We do have some responses, we've been listening carefully.
Yeah.
We have talked to neighbors, in fact, I did speak with Bob next to me today, I thought it was a very pleasant conversation, a good exchange of, you know, what improvements we think might be needed. We didn't totally agree, but anyways, we did take some notes, and we believe we can respond to all the major comments, the significant ones. What we're hearing is, safety is the main concern. We heard safety a lot, much more tonight than a planning commission. If the city required a safety study, we would have certainly submitted one. The reason is we didn't is because, is because it doesn't exist. There's no such thing as a safety study, it doesn't exist in SEQA, in the city's code. We believe the reason why is because safety is baked into the city's codes and policies, state law, county law, it's all based on safety. For example, the fire department requires hydrants, sprinklers for the buildings, so if there's a fire, they're all sprinklered, all based on safety. There's soil studies.
I think they were talking about traffic and pedestrian safety.
And I believe I heard some fires, somebody mentioned a fire that would break out in the neighborhood, and utilities and a gas line and so on. We have submitted 15 or more studies to address all this, spent 18 months with city staff addressing all of their comments based on safety. It's baked into the, to the process. Regarding traffic, we have spent significant time and hired a professional consultant who's here tonight. We believe that addressed the traffic. The traffic conditions being mentioned tonight are existing conditions, including no sidewalk. The city planner at the planning commission meeting did remind the planning commission that a sidewalk project is a bigger undertaking really done by the city. It's a capital improvement project, does a right-of-way exist? Does the current street, is it wide enough? Is there eight feet on both sides to accommodate the sidewalks? How do you deal with utilities? It's, it's a massive undertaking, and it really isn't, there's case law that doesn't require developers by nexus to provide more than is necessary in front of their project site. So in terms of traffic, it has been addressed, there was an LTA submitted by a professional engineer, it was reviewed by public work staff, there was a lot of exchange. As a result, public, the city staff is recommending 170 conditions of approval. Repeat, 170 conditions, all based on safety. Safety is baked into the process. So we don't believe any further study is needed, it's all been studied, we've been working on this for 18 months. You know, we respect the neighbors' opinions, but we believe it's been addressed, it's been vetted out. And regarding parking, there was a lot of parking comments, I want to just reiterate, we're providing over double the city code. We could come, we could have come in with half the parking and even less per density bonus law. We are actually parking double the city's code. So I really want to emphasize that. We don't believe there will be spillover into the neighborhoods. Regarding construction traffic and dust, that will be mitigated. We're required to submit a traffic control plan to the public work staff that they will review and approve. There are city codes on hours and truck trips and so on. We believe everything's been addressed, there's 170 conditions that we agree with, so I'm...
You still have six minutes, six plus minutes. Could you address the concern that was raised about the blind hill? The traffic, that, that traffic, specific traffic issue?
Yeah, so, so once again.
You or your consultant, whoever.
That is an existing condition, if the mayor agrees, I would like to ask him to come up to answer to that. Are you agreeable? Thank you.
Yeah, you still have six minutes. Wait till he gets there.
Good evening, Council. I'm Dennis Pasco with DUEC. We prepared the LTA, the Local Transportation Assessment. Regarding the blind hill, that is an existing condition that is there. It is a, Kelly Street is a residential street, so that street was designed to a specific street standard. The street standards also include roadway grades, vertical and horizontal. There is an existing driveway there on the site now, which is being used by a property, so vehicles are accessing on that driveway to go in and out of Kelly Street.
Yeah, so basically, it's, the church sold the property, four-point-something acres, there was nothing there. Now there's gonna be 35 homes. So this is a new condition. How do you propose to address the concerns about the blind hill? Because right now, there's nothing there, so...
There's, there's nothing there, but there is an existing driveway curb cut that is being used by a home. So there, so the driveway was designed to be there. There is, we did recommend a red curbing, this section up next to the driveway.
Excuse me, I, we're listening to the response here, thank you.
We did recommend red curbing, the section of the street, that would hinder site distance as cars pull out, so that provides additional site distance as cars go over the crest.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else from the council wishing to ask questions? All right, go ahead, you have, you still have five minutes left, if you have any other comments you'd like to make at this time?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So just a closing statement is, we've been working closely with staff for 18 months, we believe all of the codes and policies, state law, has been addressed. State density bonus law is reality, it constantly are mending law, we believe this is exactly what the state has, intends, to provide affordable units, higher density. We believe there's, the project has been designed to mitigate a lot of impacts, for example, two-story homes next to the neighbors, and a lower pad, and then the other homes will be even lower than that. The slope is about 20 to 25 feet from top to bottom, so much of the project won't even be seen from the neighborhood. And then, just to reiterate, that was brought up by the planning commission, the housing element was recently adopted and certified by the state that requires 5,400 units up until, I believe, 2029.
This is just to respond to the public?
Okay.
This is rebuttal?
Okay, thank you.
Not, not a summary, it's rebuttal.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, do you have any other comments to make?
Thank you, Mayor. No comments as a rebuttal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Staff, are you able to answer any of the questions by, that were brought by the public? Thank you, and I'd love to, to address the issue about the blind hill.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Darlene Condro, I'm the Director of Development Services for the city, and I oversee the divisions of Planning, Engineering, Building, and Code Enforcement. And together, staff works comprehensively to address issues such as those raised by the residents about construction. So for example, as a developer mentioned, there are several conditions of approval already in the resolution for engineering standards, and it's ultimately the developer's responsibility to ensure that their construction activities don't create a public nuisance. And those conditions of approval specifically are numbers 40 to 46, if someone wants to look those conditions up, which address the construction issues.
No idling, noise in hours, not anything before 7:00 a.m.?
Yes, thank you.
Nothing on holiday days?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Dust, water it down.
And then our staff work together, engineering, building, code enforcement, we work together to ensure that there is compliance with all of these conditions of approval on the permit. In response to the question about utilities, the conditions of approval 64 through 66 specifically address undergrounding. So those were the items that I wanted to address, if staff has more.
All right.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I have a couple other comments to address. One was regarding, one of the members of the public was concerned that the units would be used as like a short-term rental or for corporations. We do have a condition of approval stating that there is no short-term rentals allowed. Another one was regarding the HOA, and that that would be enforcing the parking in the two-car garage. That is a condition of approval that's already in the project. I think Darlene already mentioned the construction conditions of approval. Regarding your comment on the blind, the blind hill, in the Local Transportation Assessment, as the traffic engineer mentioned, there is a section regarding driveway site distance, and it does mention that by restricting the on-stream parking on the south side of Kelly Street between the existing project driveway to the existing fire hydrant to the rest, to the west, that it would increase the site distance at the existing project driveway. So by doing that, it would help the site distance, so it'd be an improvement to the existing condition.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Borrego, could the council actually request that a study be done to address specifically the pedestrian traffic issues that have been raised by the public, including with respect to the blind hill?
Yes, so Honorable Mayor and council members, if it were council's desire, we could certainly do an analysis of really looking at traffic calming in general in the immediate neighborhood, and then come back with some specific recommendations that we might do. I will say, as the city council... I will say, as the city council knows, we have undertaken extensive traffic calming improvements in Fire Mountain-
Fire Mountain, yes.
Much more than any other neighborhood. But you know, there's always opportunities to continue to look to do more, and we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. All right. To the council, council member Figueroa.
Interrupt.
I'm sorry, no, we already closed.
Pause one of our four minutes.
I'm sorry, we already closed it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I did want to-
Hey, we've got five council members up here who may ask you a question. Thank you. Council member Figueroa.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for this report. Thank you to the community of Fire Mountain for showing up here today and expressing your concerns. I appreciate the opportunity, well, yeah, give it up for your focus. I appreciate the opportunity that you guys let me sit in at the listening session, the first one, and then meet with you last week as you convened as well. There's a few, as city staff have mentioned, there has been a lot of traffic calming measures implemented throughout Fire Mountain. Some were on our consent calendar today as well. And so I know that there has been a lot of efforts, given the fact that we have folks from Fire Mountain, families and youth that use South Hill Elementary, we have Palm Quest and Lincoln Middle School. So improving the traffic and pedestrian safety of that community is very important. I didn't grow up in Fire Mountain, but I attended Lincoln Middle School back in the 90s. So I'm very familiar with what the area used to look like 30 years ago. I have a few questions, because it was kind of thrown out there, but I wasn't necessarily sure, because I didn't see it on the report, but I heard it mentioned. For condition of approval, did we, in addition to the four-way stop sign on Cassidy and Soto, did we say that there would be a stop sign on Kelly as well?
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Council, that was not added as a formal condition of approval. I think that may have been a discussion by the developer, I would defer to him, but that was not a formal condition of approval.
Okay. And then I also heard a speed limit radar signs on Kelly as well?
Council member Figueroa, that was not a formal condition of approval by city staff. I think that's something developer discussed with the community.
Okay. And what about repaving Kelly? Because that was mentioned as well.
Council member Figueroa, there's a condition of approval that requires the Kelly to be paved, repaved to full width for a certain section. It's not the entire length of Kelly, but it's more than the project frontage.
From what parts?
Let me look up the condition quickly here.
And we move on to, while you're looking at the right turn only, I know that that was mentioned. Where are we with that?
Council member Figueroa, council, that was, again, not a formal condition of approval added by staff. I think the developer met with the community subsequent to when we added these conditions of approval. So if we need to add it as a condition of approval, we can do that, but it's not currently listed as a condition of approval.
Okay. And then I also heard the red striping of the curb, but then I also heard grumblings in the crowds. I don't even know if that's something that the community would approve of.
So council member Figueroa and council member, that was added as a condition of approval, and that was to address some of the concerns with sight distance. So that is a safety, to address some of the safety issues raised by the community. And the developer did agree to that condition of approval, and it has been added.
Okay.
Council member Figueroa, so it's condition number 30, which requires Kelly Street to be paved to full width for inch-and-a-half grind and overlay between Soto Street and Andy Lane.
Okay, so from Soto to Andy, okay.
It's a little west of the project site.
Okay. There was a few things, and thank you, staff, for clarifying the construction guidelines listed from 44 to 47. I know that that was mentioned, the road deterioration, repaving of, oh no, mitigate daily dust, not start the project until after 7:00 AM. As far as the parking of construction workers and the materials, that's also on-site, correct? So it won't be in the community. There was a few things that I don't think were mentioned, but knowing the area, it is a concern to mine. Part of, well, it should be, but the safe route to school for the elementary students and families that access South Hill Elementary and the other side of the bridge. There is, it's partial sidewalk and it's not sidewalk. I think that that is a major concern, especially as we're going to be building 30-plus homes there. Those families are most likely, the youth in that community are most likely going to attend South Hill Elementary, Palm Quest Elementary, Lincoln Middle School. Also, with the rise of e-bikes in the community, we also have to consider what that will look like for students going to Lincoln Middle School, South Hill Elementary, and Palm Quest, leaving that community. And when I see that turn, it's very, very concerning. Another thing to consider as well is the Head Start program right there on Kelly Street. That's a MAC Head Start program, the North Coast Center Head Start program, that you have parents coming in and out of that area early in the morning, same time that families are going to school, and then coming back to pick up their children around the same time that kids are coming back from school, along with the church. So you know, it's just, there's a lot of traffic or different components, not just the residents that access that area, that are concerning. I think that one of the things that I heard the developer say was, the neighbors' opinions, based on the conversations that they've had with, well, that they've addressed the neighbors' opinions, but based on the conversations I have had with the neighbors and what was expressed today, I don't think their concerns have been addressed. I think for me, as a condition of approval, I would like to move that the city or the developer, under the guidance of the city manager, you can inform me what usually is the practice, but that the city, that it be directed to conduct a focused safety and a safety study addressing both pedestrian and traffic concerns raised by the residents of this neighborhood today. And the study should evaluate current conditions and identify potential mitigation measures to enhance safety for all road users. And that's something that I would like to make a motion on.
Member Figueroa, so no one has made a motion yet, so what you could do is move approval for-
I apologize.
The project?
Yes.
But adding that?
Correct. So that being a condition of approval, I move to add that. Well, I would prefer that the developer pay for it, but I don't know what the common practice has.
And I believe Mr. Borrego has indicated that city staff could do it as well.
Okay.
Right? But I do want to, before I go back to another council member, I do want to know if the items that were brought up by council member Figueroa, that were brought up by the applicant via representative, that they would agree to all these things, the extra stop sign and some other, are those, are those already, you already approved, you already agreed to those? Yes, please. There was an extra stop sign right there, was-
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Steve Sheldon.
Mr. Sheldon.
Thank you. Which specific items, Mayor, would you like?
During the presentation-
Yes.
Yes, there were some things that you were agreeing to that were apparently not part of the conditions as stated by staff. So, but you are agreeing to those now?
Can we go through them so we're clear on which ones? Because we are generally in agreement, I want to just be clear.
Yes, absolutely clear.
And mind you, it was mentioned in today's presentation, and I think it's something also that the community should weigh on. There was mentioned a stop sign on Kelly. So I don't know, is that coming down the hill or on the turn? Where would that be implemented?
Council member Figueroa, I don't want to speak for the commenters, but I believe they were talking about a project stop sign, a stop sign at the project driveway going on to Kelly Street. That's something that the developer could certainly agree to or not agree to.
Yes.
And then there was also the mention of a speed limit radar signs?
Yes, we had proposed that earlier, and I can get into details, it wasn't accepted, but we were willing to do that as well and volunteered that ourselves two months ago.
Okay.
Okay, so that could be added as a condition?
Yeah.
With the, is being accepted by the consultant?
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Council, I think I'd like to have our public works director come and speak to that, because I know there was discussions that occurred between the developer and our traffic engineering staff.
It's good to be clear on this, yes.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Hameed Baudoire, Public Works Director. I was back there, could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, you were apparently discussing with the applicant certain conditions that they were agreeing to that were not made conditions by staff, that included a traffic, was it-
It was a stop sign on Kelly, a speed limit radar sign on Kelly.
Yes, the speed limit radar sign typically is an overkill for something like this. There's no specific requirements. I don't see why we cannot do that.
Okay, so that could be added?
Yes, that's if you want to do that. We can also look at other measures, you know, added the speed limit signs and things of that nature, which is missing. These are all discretionary traffic control improvement devices. There are no specific requirements at discretion of the staff and the council.
Right, these were things that the applicant had agreed to, and you would be fine to have those as conditions?
If your direction is that you would like to have a speed, feedback radar sign there, I would like to maybe consider contributions in full or partially for that installation. That helps.
Well, that would be by the applicant, paid for by the applicant?
That's fine.
Okay. I mean, I'm assuming that you were offering that, is that correct, sir?
Yeah, I'm just, I don't see why we could not and we cannot.
Yes.
We can definitely consider and install it, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Baudoire.
What was also mentioned was the repaving of Kelly, the paving of Kelly Street.
Paving?
I think there were parts of it.
Yeah, from Soto to Andy, yeah.
Yeah, the pavement rehab is typically done by engineering. The pavement condition itself by the additional passenger cars will not be impacted. We design pavements for what in the industry they call a 10-kips equivalent single axle load for heavy trucks. The impact on pavement on that street because of trash rock, that's what we are actually designing for. But if it can use a slurry seal, it's definitely something that the engineering staff can look into adding it to their list of the next year's pavement rehab job.
Was the paving mentioned by, for the city to do or for the developer to do? I'm trying to-
If I may, council member Figueroa, the condition of approval number 30 is already added to the resolution as full width improvement of Kelly Street between Soto Street and Andy Lane.
Okay. All right, awesome. Yeah, and then there was also the mention of the right turn only.
Out of the driver?
Yes.
That right turn only would have been needed if there was no parking restriction on the southerly side between the driveway and the existing fire hydrant. Once you put the parking restriction, the red curb and signage on the southerly side between the driveway and the existing fire hydrant, that intersection, that driveway will meet the standard sight distance requirements, you can allow full access.
Okay. Okay, yep. So I would like to move to, I would, they can't, they can't hear. Can you guys hear?
All right, so can you say the last part of it loudly, Mr. Baudoire?
About the driveway sight distance?
Can you guys hear?
The question was about a right turn.
Around the curb?
Yes.
Soto and Kelly.
So I believe you said that the, that the right turn only is not needed because of the red curbing by the entrance and exit of the property? And because that improves the safety, the right turn only is not necessary? Is that what you said?
Right turn only would be necessary under existing conditions, but once we put the parking restriction between the driveway and the fire hydrant, that corner will become available also, and it will meet the standard sight distance requirements. With that parking restriction, the driveway can safely operate with full access.
Okay, thank you. So the motion, sorry, excuse me. So the motion is of staff's recommendation plus the study-
Correct.
Plus those items that have been accepted by the applicant, which are, state them for the record.
The stop sign on Kelly, speed limit radar signs, the repaving of Kelly, right turn only, and I believe the red striping on the curb is already added on there.
So, stop sign on Cassidy is already in?
That's already in.
It's already in.
So this is, again, this is, this is a condition of approval based on doing the safety study on pedestrian and traffic to be conducted first.
Okay, so there, that is a motion. Is a, is a city clerk clear on what the motion is? All right.
Do you have other comments?
Yes, right. I'll go ahead and second that motion. Council member Robinson.
So, so my question, I have a couple things. One, we're sitting up here designing the traffic problem, so you know, we're telling them where the stop sign should go, no right turn, you, a right turn only, you do the right turn only, and you're going to create a problem of everybody going right and then down the other street. There's no need for that. If they go left, they go to Soto. We can fix Soto by putting a stop sign at Soto and Kelly each direction, making it a two-way stop. I'm not going to design it here, but that's the stuff that could happen with the study. But the question I have with the study is, is the developer required to pay for this traffic study? Because it sounds like they got a problem right now. Whether this development goes in or not, we just heard people are at risk walking on the, they're afraid to walk down Soto, they're afraid to walk here, the people are speeding, their neighbors are the ones that are speeding. So we have, we have a traffic issue right now. So can we put that all on the back of the developer to fix, or do we have to pay for?
The study is by the city.
I would be happy to answer that, so-
Yes.
Yes, so, and I'm going to weigh on a few different topics that have been, I'm going to put my old-
Mr. Borrego.
-planning director hat on. So, yeah, so with respect to the, the traffic study that was mentioned, the neighborhood traffic study, we cannot obligate the developer to do that. That's beyond the scope of the project. If council directs that, it would be done at the cost of the city. Many of the issues that have been brought up today are issues that have existed out in Fire Mountain for years. And to your point, council member Robinson, would exist with or without this project. I think it's very important to point out, one, one part of the testimony this evening is, and it's something that we've dealt with on our staff for several years, the reality is, half the residents in Fire Mountain want sidewalks and the other half do not. And that's just the reality of it. So to assume that we're going to install sidewalks throughout the neighborhood, not only would we have to acquire the right-of-way potentially to do it, which means purchasing private property, many of the residents have block walls, planters, landscaping, mailboxes. It's not as simple as just putting in sidewalks into this neighborhood. It's a very complicated issue. That said, we can study it and look at options, not only for sidewalks, but for traffic calming. But I just want to caution everyone that it's not a very simple, easy to address, and we would definitely limit it to this immediate area, otherwise-
Right.
-the study would grow exponentially. So that's one issue. One thing, to the point that was just made, as well as, as far as traffic design, I know your time is probably running out if it isn't already, so I'll make it really quick. One concern that we do need to be mindful of is a stop sign on Kelly Street at the driveway entrance is very close to the intersection at Huntsaker, you know, probably less than 100 feet away. So we need to be mindful of that as well. And I don't want to, I want to make sure that at the end of the day, while I think that's acceptable to the developer, and certainly at this point acceptable to staff, we also make sure that just from a functional standpoint, we can have two stop signs that close to each other. The right turn right out, I'll kind of reiterate the comments that were made here. I mean, there could be other consequences of doing that. One is, traffic may just make a right right out of the development, make U-turn at Huntsaker, and head back out, or it's going to direct all the traffic to Huntsaker. And in fairness to those residents, they haven't had a chance to weigh in on this either. So, you know, happy to look at all this, but I just want to make sure that we're mindful of all the consequences of the decisions tonight. Council member Robinson, I just want to say, I'm not trying to design this on the fly. I think the developer brought this up based off the listening sessions that they had with the residents. And so I was just reiterating what they stated in their presentation. But I think as they do this study, we can know the impacts of like what a city manager just mentioned in regards to having the stop sign on Kelly, or, because there is the potential of folks going up the street, making that U-turn. I think everyone's well aware of that. I think hopefully the study will, will show that, and we'll be able to move forward with something we could agree on.
Council member Robinson- Councilmember Robinson, are you finished with your comments? Okay.
And I want, City Manager, thank you for bringing some clarity to this. So the studies, I just want to make sure on one thing, the studies will run, if the project gets approved, the studies will run concurrent with the project moving forward? Or we're not holding the project up to do the studies?
Yes, that's correct. And to be, and to be clear, we cannot condition the developer to make any improvements that are identified in that study because of the issue of there being a nexus in terms of the impact of this project. So this project would be a larger study that would be done independent of this development. We can't come back and say, okay, the study identified X, Y, and Z, and developer, you're on the hook for X, Y, and Z. Clearly, there is no nexus there and we cannot require that legally.
But as a city, can we do it concurrently so that, as, I don't know what the build-out is and all that time for this project, but that any remediations that might come out of the study, we can put in place by the time it's ready for occupancy?
Yeah, certainly we could do that. And, you know, just, yeah, because obviously, as you know, it takes quite a while before the first shovel hits the ground on a project like this and we can certainly move on the study concurrently.
Okay, and then the, the only other thing, is I think there is some additional signage and this may come back to our traffic engineer to deal with, but, you know, sometimes just simple signage such as vehicles exiting, or, you know, you've seen those where there's kind of a hidden driveway in the, in the path of traffic that we put signage in. I didn't see anything in the conditions as far as additional signage. I don't know if that can be added or... I'm just kind of throwing it out there. If the developer would be willing to at least hold a spot for some safety signage, I don't know, that might help. Okay. Last, last thing, the high-pressure, high-pressure gas line was brought up. Can you, somebody address that, that, is it a concern, not a concern? How deep is it? Are we okay?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Robinson. So the applicant received today confirmation from SDGNE that the project presents no conflict with the existing high-pressure gas line. They've actually given conditional approval of the design as proposed.
Thank you. And then one other speaker asked about access, and I think it might have been addressed, but I might have missed it, on, from the Walmart side, being able to put a road in. Is that even possible? Is it even feasible?
Thank you, Councilmember. That is other property. We'd have to go through, I think, two different property owners to be able to do that. I don't see that as being feasible. It's other people's property.
Right, okay. Thank you for that. And let's see, I saved all the emails and I was just trying to address some of them. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Joyce.
I just wanted to ask a couple questions. So it was that no short-term rentals is included in the, how did that get included into the?
Sure. Councilmember Joyce, Councilmember, since this project is including affordable units, it's therefore prohibited from using any of the units as short-term rental.
All, any of all the units?
That is correct.
Just, Deputy Mayor Joyce, just to provide further clarification, our local density bonus provisions have a, have a preclusion of utilizing any unit within a project that utilizes density bonus to be utilized as short-term rental. So we, we redone it and we included it as a conditional approval, so there's no misrepresentation or miscommunication.
Thank you. I just also wanted to add, just another thought about the right turn only. I worry about, the way it's set up would be really hard to enforce if it's like a no, no left turn coming out of that driveway. And then you set an expectation for people coming down that road, that all the cars are going to go right, and I could, I could see a lot of accidents happening with somebody taking a left there unexpectedly. So just as flexible as we can be with that condition, I would say make sure it's the safest version of whatever goes in there. If it's, if the right turn only makes it less safe, then I think we should do not that.
So, Councilmember Joyce, City Council, at this time, that is not a condition of approval for the right turn only. And I believe since, as our Public Works Director mentioned, since there are going to be no parking at the project entrance line, there's no need for there to be a right turn only.
I heard it reiterated by Councilmember Figueroa. So I just want to make sure that that's, we're all clear. I'm not really sure.
I think Councilmember Robinson brought it up as well, and I've had this conversation with our city manager. I think it was a request from the community during the listening sessions, but going back to what I just mentioned to Councilmember Robinson, that if the study comes out and it pretty much says like, that's not the best approach for the, the community as a whole, for that not to be a condition that we move forward with, but to have the study determine that.
Sure. And then maybe I can just read back the conditions of approval that you have to make sure we're on the same page. So one is the safety study that the city would pay for. The other, the condition of approval would be the stop sign at Kelly Street that the developer would pay for, the speed limit radar signs, which would also be paid by the developer, and then the repaving of Kelly Street at the distance that you mentioned. Are those the four added conditions of approval you would like?
Added to what's already included, which is, yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Weiss.
So I think this, I think the study in regards to site distance has already been done.
Councilmember Weiss, that's correct. The traffic study includes a site distance evaluation. And with the recommended, as the Public Works Director reiterated, with the recommendation to red curb, the south side of Kelly Street from the project driveway to the nearest fire hydrant to the west, that will clear up and provide the appropriate site distance.
So that, that part's already been done.
Yes, sir.
So the other change, because I wouldn't support just to write and do another study because they've already done it. The only other thing I would add for the stop sign at Kelly Street in the project entry would be that if it were to meet warrants, so we're not just going to be simply putting stop signs in all over, that if we do a warrant analysis and it met warrants, plenty good, put it in. If it doesn't meet warrants, then don't worry about it.
All right, there's a motion and a second. And let's see, if there's anything else I need to do on this. It's a motion second to adopt the resolution. So please vote, as amended.
I'm waiting for Deputy Mayor Joyce.
Waiting for you to vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. All right, thank you. All right, we're coming back. On item number 34, staff recommends city council introduce an ordinance amending the Oceanside City Code to allow up to four cannabis storefront retail licenses. Number two, introduce an ordinance amending the Oceanside zoning ordinance, specifying which districts would allow storefront retailers. Number three, adopt a resolution establishing new cannabis business fees and endorsing the proposed application materials, procedures, and format. And filing number four, adopt a resolution granting license priority to the city's two existing operators. Like to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and our correspondence.
Staff, public, and several of the potential operators.
Same thing, staff, public, emails, and the applicants or potential applicants.
Staff, public, including conversations as well as emails.
Staff and members of the public.
All right, Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
Staff, public, and potential applicants.
And we've, all the correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and begin with a presentation by Dane Thompson, Associate Planner for the City of Oceanside. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you and good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Dane Thompson with the Planning Division presenting the proposed cannabis storefront retail licensing program. Yes, thank you. Staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance amending the Oceanside City Code to allow up to four cannabis storefront retail licenses, introduce an ordinance amending the Oceanside zoning ordinance, specifying which districts would allow storefront retailers, adopt a resolution establishing new cannabis business fees, and endorsing the proposed application materials, procedures, and format, and adopt a resolution granting license priority to the city's two existing operators. This table shows a snapshot of the licenses issued and active today. There are three operating licenses spread between two businesses. The storefront cannabis retail program has been in the works now for over two years, initiating after April 2023, when the city council directed staff to develop a program allowing up to two storefront retail licenses. The city council has given staff further direction in 2023, November 2023, as well as February of this year. Tonight's staff is asking the city council to take five actions. Amend the Oceanside City Code, amend the Oceanside zoning ordinance, establish official application procedures, materials, and format, update cannabis fees, and grant priority to the existing cannabis operators. The city code amendment would put a cap at four storefront retail licenses. It would eliminate the one vacant non-storefront delivery retail license and clarify that the operating non-storefront delivery license would be forfeited and eliminated once the business ceases operations. The code amendment would also restrict transfer of ownership interest during the first four years of operation and institute deadlines for all license types become operational. I want to note that operational standards are largely omitted from the city code amendment as they are sufficiently regulated by existing state and local codes. For instance, hours of operation are limited to 10:00 p.m. Surveillance cameras are required for all entrances, exits, as well as the point-of-sale system. Armed security guards are required for all cannabis businesses in the city. Odors cannot be detected off premises, and cannabis insignias or logos are prohibited. The zoning ordinance would be amended to create a definition for storefront retail cannabis. That definition would restrict drive-through, drive-up, and curbside delivery services citywide. Articles 11 and 13 would also be amended to allow storefront retailers in various commercial and industrial districts. And Article 36 would be amended to clarify that storefront retail cannabis uses require a regulated use permit and are subject to the standard separations. Here is the zoning map. There have been no changes to this since the February 2025 direction from the council. For the application, applicants must submit a background check and live scan for all owners. They will sign legal disclosures and legal agreements. They have to submit a pre-lease and property owner consent form, submit conceptual architectural plans with security plans, proof of capitalization, as well as a business plan. The proposed evaluation criteria is comprised of three equal-point sections. The Business, Labor, and Employment Plan offers points for industry knowledge, proof of capitalization, pro formas, local ownership. The Community and Employee Benefits Section awards points for donations to youth-serving nonprofits and offering wages above the county minimum. The Location Section would deduct points for varying distances to specified land uses. I want to point out that we have a correction that's up on the screen. Previously included with the materials, the proof of capitalization was a range from $75,000 to $250,000. We would like to correct that to eliminate the range and just have the minimum be $250,000. Licenses would be awarded via a merit-based process. First step, applicants would submit for a zoning verification letter. Staff would review that, sorry, the consultant would review that application and notify any applicants that are in a zone that doesn't allow storefront retailers or is within a disqualifying distance to a sensitive land use. They would be informed to find another site or not submit an application altogether. Applicants which did receive a confirmational zoning verification letter could then submit a formal application. The next step would be a completeness screening by the city's consultant, where we would allow applicants 30 days to cure their application of any missing materials. After that period, the consultant would score the applications. And the top eight scoring applications, if they meet the 90% minimum threshold, would move on to the next step, which is city manager panel interviews. The city manager panel interviews will determine the top-scoring applications who would be awarded a local license and allowed to submit for a conditional use permit. Action four is to update the cannabis fee schedule. We have a new cannabis consultant, so we must revise the fees to meet their costs and ensure for full cost recovery for the city. And lastly, action five would grant priority to the city's two existing operators. The existing operators would still be required to meet the minimum qualifications, that is a 90% minimum score. And they would go through a two-track application process, which would streamline their review, resulting in faster processing. Should one or more of these existing operators fail to supply a qualifying application, those licenses would be open to the public at a later date determined by staff. This program is exempt from SEQA under the common sense exemption, that SEQA only applies to projects which have a potential to cause significant effects on the environment. Individual requests would be subject to SEQA review during the CUP process. On March 24th of this year, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend city council approval of the proposed code amendments. The Planning Commission also expressed desire to explore a separate program allowing limited retail sales associated with a cultivation facility, similar to a winery in Southmore Hills, relax locational criteria and regulated use separations, as well as remove the requirement for applicants to retain a location prior to receiving a local license. Here is a rough timeline for how the storefront cannabis program could pan out, with applications being received later this year and businesses becoming operational in 2027 or 2028. With that, staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance amending the Oceanside City Code to allow up to four cannabis storefront retail licenses, introduce an ordinance amending the Oceanside zoning ordinance, specifying which districts would allow storefront retailers, adopt a resolution establishing new cannabis business fees and endorsing the proposed application materials, procedures, and format, and adopt a resolution granting license priority to the city's two existing operators. That concludes my presentation. I will be available for questions. We also have the consultant here if you have questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a time for the public to speak to the council. You have up to three minutes. Let's see, how many do we have?
We have currently 16 registered speakers.
Okay, let's shoot for two minutes. I'll work with you if you need a little more time. Are there any organized presentations that have registered with you?
There are none.
Okay, okay, so go ahead and start going through. So the first one is Mr. John Byram, followed by Madison Rapp, followed by Andres Finsan. Mr. Byram?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, for 23 years, I came here speaking with an organization. On April 30th, I retired. And this is the first time I put on pants since May 1st.
TMI, I think is what is being said up here, but...
In California, 19, over 19,000 licenses were given out. And today, only 8,514 exist. 10,828 licenses were surrendered because of... 10,828 licenses were surrendered because of financial issue. Not paying taxes. They've just given up their licenses. There was an individual, he was trying to sell his license for $35,000, couldn't do it. So now he's giving it away so that someone would take it and take his lease. One last thing, from San Diego County Medical Examiner, 25-year-olds and under, 35% that committed suicide in San Diego County had marijuana in their system. And we have 40 individuals going into emergency rooms every day for marijuana overdoses, including psychosis, cyclical vomiting syndrome, a whole bunch of things. And I hope that you guys do continue this until August 6th so I can get information to you because all the wonderful things you hear about the marijuana industry are not always true. The reality is the data that we have, so I'd like to get that to you.
Thank you. Madison Rapp, followed by Andres Binson?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. I appreciate your work on this issue, and I hope that you'll really dig into the research about all the problems that will certainly arise with allowing for more cannabis storefronts in Oceanside. Tonight, I want to focus on some of the financial and tax-related implications because the revenue promises often made in support of such proposals are far from guaranteed. Across California, cannabis tax revenue has not met expectations. Statewide, cannabis tax revenue dropped significantly in the last quarter of 2024. And San Diego, for example, experienced a decline in tax revenue from cannabis in fiscal year 2024 compared with the previous year. I have attended many of the county's cannabis equity program meetings and heard disgruntled storefront operators express their concerns about how tough it is to make money in the cannabis business. These trends are not isolated. They reflect a persistent, unregulated illicit market that continues to thrive and directly competes with licensed businesses. Even for cities trying to collect the revenue they're owed, it's not simple. California has struggled to recoup unpaid cannabis taxes, resorting to measures like property seizures while still failing to close the gap. Oceanside should anticipate similar challenges. If legal operators are struggling and enforcement remains costly, the expected return may never materialize. Additionally, the rise of unregulated hemp-derived products, some with psychoactive effects similar to cannabis, further weakens the economic case. These products are not subject to the same licensing or taxation requirements and siphon demand away from legitimate businesses, widening the tax gap. Before expanding cannabis storefronts, we should ask, are we building a reliable revenue stream or investing city resources into a regulatory structure that may never pay off? Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Andres Binson, followed by Karen Hanani, Hanani, excuse me. Hannah, Hannah Y, sorry, I misspelled it.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members and staff. My name is Andres Binson. And I'm here on behalf of the UFCW Local 135, the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, representing over 11,000 workers in San Diego County, including hundreds who work in the cannabis industry. As Oceanside moves forward with licensing additional cannabis businesses, we urge you to prioritize operators who have demonstrated a true commitment to fair labor standards, specifically to incorporate existing collective bargaining agreements known as CBAs into your valuation criteria. CBAs are legally binding contracts that guarantee workers fair wages, good benefits, safe workplaces, and a voice on the job. Many applicants will promise good jobs if they're awarded licenses, but those who already have CBAs have shown that they're serious about those commitments. Including CBAs in your scoring process promotes businesses that are proven partners in supporting their workers. This approach encourages responsible operators who will offer stable, long-term employment to Oceanside residents. It sends a strong message to Oceanside values businesses that invest in their workforce and contribute to the local economy in a meaningful way. We respectfully ask the council to include points for existing CBAs in the cannabis licensing rubric. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you. Karen Hanawi, followed by Dean Scott?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. First off, I want to extend my sincere gratitude. Thank you to the city staff for your hard work on this project over the years and tonight's presentation. And thank you to everyone on the dais for your time and attention in hearing me and George and Medleaf out over the past five years of operation in this city. I'll be the only one speaking on behalf of Medleaf tonight to help keep things brief. This evening, I have one request. I respectfully ask city council to clearly define tonight the specific steps and timelines starting as soon as possible for the two existing licenses to move to CUP and open up the licensed retail store locations by 2026 and not 2027 or 2028. This moment has been almost three years in the making, and I can't express now how important it is for our company, for our employees, and for the viability of our company here in the community. Also, one thing that I did hear in the presentation that I'd like to bring up is as far as like ownership interest, we do have partners. And if George and I would want to say buy out a partner, would that be something that would be allowed in the ownership change? So that's it. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Dean Scott, followed by Sedma Navarro.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. My name is Coach Scott. I live and reside and work here in Oceanside. I'm a father, a financial advisor. I appreciate you're going to extend the timeline on this controversial issue and divisive issue to next month. I hope you'll dig into the problems and into the research and do some research on the problems that will arise allowing more cannabis businesses in Oceanside beyond what we already have in our city. Cannabis is not a harmless substance, especially for adolescents and young adults, pregnant, and those with health disparities. While regulations may attempt to limit access, the reality is that increased storefront presence in a community like ours increases normalization and social pressure. More marijuana stores means more opportunity, whether through social sharing, unlimited deliveries, misdirect purchases, or exposure to predatory publicity. I don't think the city of Oceanside or our community has anything to gain and has much to lose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sedma Navarro, followed by Trina Priest.
Good evening, council, mayor. I came in prepared with a big speech and all, but from what I see, at the last council, there was application for two, there's one active, and now we have four. I saw the map right now, and it was pretty quick, so I wasn't too sure where exactly these cannabis places are going to be. I know they're a long mission, and I'm hoping that not all applications that are put in are going to be in District One. I originally had a group of people who were willing to come in and speak because I represent the community of Eastside. And there's a lot of families with a lot of young children in there. Unfortunately, they were shaken up this morning. It was pretty harsh, so I told them just watch it on TV. So from what I see, that the children are my main concern. From what I studied, a lot of these dispensaries are going to be within, from what I was reading, I'm not too sure or not, it was going to be about 500 to 1,000 feet from a school. Okay, so these kids walk to school every day. They're going to be seeing these dispensaries. And I know because when I was a kid of 15, I went through the same thing. Peer pressure, it was to be vulnerable and to go along with what everybody's doing, all the fad and everything. So I did fall into that. There was places where you can buy cannabis and stuff, and we were able to buy it as kids. As young as fourth and fifth grade, kids were able to buy $5 bag, $10 bag. And that was because it was next to the school. My main concern is about the youth, about the community. And well, my time's up, but I wanted to express my concern for the children and for the community too that can't be represented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Trina Priest. I'm a middle school teacher. I'm a mother of three teens, and I'm a longtime resident here of Oceanside. I came tonight to oppose Item 34, which would bring four marijuana storefronts to Oceanside. So instead, I will thank you for postponing this very unwise idea. As a middle school teacher, I wanted to shine a light on the role of marijuana consumption as a cause of physical and mental health problems for youth, as well as its cost to society, that include increased emergency room visits, hospitalizations for depression, suicide and psychotic episodes, and a rise in marijuana-related traffic deaths. In addition, it costs family and friends through social withdrawal and reduced communication skills, hampering academic achievement, professional relationships, and work productivity. I recognize firsthand how our young people are challenged by marijuana businesses' predatory and pervasive advertising firepower through social media and billboards. And research states that when youth grow up in communities where marijuana consumption is flaunted through the presence of marijuana storefronts, their perception of risk of using drugs will be muted. Addiction is a pediatric onset disease, so preventing young people from initiating drug use gives them the best chance at fulfilling their potential. As Frederick Douglass once said, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." Hopefully, Oceanside will care more about building strong young people and shelve this idea of bringing marijuana businesses into our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ben Dennis, followed by Tamara Rosmas. Ben Dennis, not here. Tamara Rosmas, followed by Alexandria Barodi.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Rosmas. I'm an attorney with Austin Legal Group. I represent Left Coast. They are an existing operator here in Oceanside, manufacturing and distribution in the community since 2020. I want to speak specifically to staff's presentation on a fast-track process for existing operators for greater clarity in that definition. It is unclear whether the resolution will require a separate application window for the existing operators or whether or not they get theirs in and it closes before a general application period begins. Probably makes sense to clarify that. So speak specifically to whether or not the priority would apply to the conditional use permit process or whether the development department would continue to do that. With respect to the application itself and the materials, we're asking the city to forego the entire application and scoring process for the two existing operators and instead require a community benefits analysis as well as the location determination. These operators have been around for five years and have shown their ability and capacity to comply with the law, alleviating the need for this complete process. Staff already has those materials in their possession. Talking really fast, not a lot of time. So in sum, we would ask the court to, the court, we would ask council to further clarify the existing operators to include only location and community benefits, maybe a determination if an application is complete but not otherwise scored. Also, confirm whether or not the fast-track process applies to the conditional use permit process. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra Barodi, followed by Ezekiel Hensley.
Good evening, council and city staff. My name is Alexandria, and I am one of the current operators in the city of Oceanside. We have remained compliant, paid taxes, and helped build the foundation of a regulated cannabis market in the city of Oceanside. And we are respectfully asking that the city consider amend and a critical amendment to the resolution for granting priority, that existing operators like my business and Medleaf be given a streamlined path to retail licensure. Specifically, we feel that applications from existing operators be received and reviewed during an early separate window ahead of the general application process. These applications should be reviewed only for completeness, location suitability, and community benefit contributions, not scored against newcomers who haven't yet shown any operational track record in the city. We would like recognition for the work we have done in the city. We've operated successfully under the city's oversight. We've invested in Oceanside when the risks were high and uncertain. And we've remained compliant every step of the way. The way it sounds that the current application window seems that we're going to be lumped together with all the applicants, and we feel that that wouldn't be equitable, and it doesn't reflect the city's commitment to supporting responsible local businesses. Please consider this modest amendment. It will save time, reward compliance, and support the businesses that have already demonstrated that they belong here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ezekiel Hensley, followed by Abijah Hensley?
Hi, my name is Ezekiel Hensley, and I'm here as an Oceanside resident who supports fairness and common sense. Oceanside already has two cannabis operators who have proven that they can run compliant, reasonable businesses. They follow the rules, pay taxes, and done everything right. They shouldn't have to go through the same process as a brand-new applicant. That's not fair. Let them apply first, review them first, and streamline them from the start, not halfway through, not at the end. They already earned it. Thank you.
Thank you. Abijah?
Hi, my name is Abia Hensley. I'm a resident of Oceanside. I just wanted to say it doesn't make sense for the two existing cannabis operators who have already proven themselves to go through the same licensing process as a brand-new applicant. They should be reviewed first, not later. They should be fully streamlined from start to finish, not just in one phase. They've done the work, followed the rules, and shown they can operate responsibly in this city. Let's not hold them back by making them start from square one. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Elijah Johnson, followed by Martha Cas?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Elijah Johnson. Just want to share a quick perspective as a local. It's great the city has opened up more cannabis retail opportunities, but it's not overlooked the two operators that are already here, already compliant and already contributing to the community, and they have proven themselves. They should not have to start from scratch or wait in line behind new applicants who have already shown that they can operate responsibly, especially ones coming from outside the city. Existing operators should have their license applications and their CUP process expedited from the start. That gives them a fair chance, a head start, and it does make sense. Oceanside should support those who help build the local markets, not slow them down while others catch up. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Cas? Okay, not here. Cameron? I'm not even going to try that, your last name.
Mayor, council members?
Too many consonants.
Yeah, Cameron Garavicklu, Oceanside resident, Oceanside business owner, attorney. There's been discussion outside this chamber, I think, by lobbyists coming into this town about removing the real estate requirement from this application. I want to speak to that issue. I urge you intensely, protect our city, protect our residents, and protect our reputation. Removing this requirement under the guise of fairness or equity is a dangerous bait and switch. It opens the door to sophisticated unethical actors who game looser regulatory schemes. Let me be clear. Removing the real estate requirement invites ghost applicants. Ghost applicants are shadowy figures who hide behind so-called straw men and polished-front-facing applicants. They may technically meet the disclosure requirements, but their true control remains hidden. And city staff and interviewers won't be able to screen them out because when they sit in the interview chair or when they put in their application, they look legitimate on the surface. These aren't earnest faces that you may have heard from tonight or outside of this chamber. These are out-of-town opportunists with no investment in Oceanside's future. They flip licenses for profit as soon as they can, or they sell it to absentee operators who operate without any concern for the city. Requiring real estate is the first credibility hurl in this business. You've heard from others speaking tonight about what kind of operators we're going to have in this town. A test of seriousness and readiness. Without it, you flood the field with speculative filings dramatically increasing the number of applicants who spend tens of thousands of dollars to apply but have little chance of success. That's not equity and fairness. That's... apply but have little chance of success. That's not equity and fairness. That's exploitative. You also got the careful framework that your staff has meticulously put together, including the flexible graduated point system for buffer zones. And you undermine the five-person interview panel that this very city council selected to evaluate top applicants. That panel includes Oceanside's chief of police, whose sole priority is public safety. But without known locations, his and the rest of the panel's ability to assess the impact of crime, neighborhood compatibility, and fit is cut off at the knees. Don't let a deceptive equity argument become a Trojan horse for instability in this town. Approve staff's recommendations, please keep real estate and the associated buffers required. Ensure applicants prove they're not just compliant in theory, but they're committed to Oceanside on paper and on the ground. Thank you very much.
So are you associated with one of the applicants?
I intend to be an applicant myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Lightman.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Eric Lightman. I'm general counsel for Embarc. We operate 16 retail locations across the state. I'm going to have to disagree with the former speaker. I'm not a shadowy figure. We do intend to come here and operate as a business, but we do oppose the location requirement. The change would bring the RFP into alignment with the city's stated goal, which is to select the most qualified operators. Right now, the process risks forcing the city to choose between a great operator with a less-than-desirable location and a weaker operator with a very desirable site. Removing property allows you to choose the best retail operators first and foremost, and then work with those winning applicants to select the best locations. It also gives the city far more discretion to evaluate sensitive uses. If only the two selected operators are securing sites, staff and council will have the ability to grant waivers or not based on the full context of the proposed location and operator. This avoids dozens of applicants being forced into sensitive areas just because it's the only property that they find. Removing the property requirement also levels the playing field. Holding commercial real estate for two or more years is an enormous financial burden, especially in this market, and puts smaller operators at a disadvantage. The change makes participation more accessible for the kinds of operators that Oceanside wants to encourage. And there's also the matter of legal risk. As currently written, the RFP deducts points for properties that don't meet the strictest interpretation of the ordinance, and opens the door to potential litigation for the many applicants who won't be selected, especially if they're penalized for issues that they have no ability to fix. Finally, the change will reduce the staff workload and administrative burden of navigating the Byzantine process of trying to determine distances to sites, and many for them that will never be utilized, when instead the city can simply defer to after the application process and work with the operators to choose the two best sites. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Back to staff for any other comments? No other comments? Oh, public hearing. All right, anyone else wishing to address the council on this item? Of course, Mr. Knott is going to be addressing us, but anybody else wishing to address this? Please approach the podium. You'll have a chance to speak for two minutes, up to two minutes. Just state your name. Go ahead, Mr. Knott.
Turning out, 127 Sherri Lane. I have three basic points to make. One is out-of-town ads. This is one that's in contention with a lot of other communities. When you have ads like we have going east on one of our in-state freeways. And take and also bring up maybe, but the content should be on those ads with maybe a public education component, who, let's say, not drive while vaping, or something like that. I have a recent experience with somebody who was vaping while giving me transport, who basically took their hands off the wilt in order to enjoy the experience. Wasn't too much of experience for me. Two was cleanup around the sites of their operation. Other cities have dumpster diving, looking for castaways. That needs to be looked at. And three, I think there should be a community involvement component with maybe a proper usage component to say, "Please do not vape or smoke. You know, if you do, do it in the privacy of your home, away from, let's say, driving your car." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this item? I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and ask staff if you have any other comments to make at this point?
Certainly. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Sanchez and members of the city council. I just wanted to provide some clarification on the application process for the existing operators, so they will be subject to a streamlined approach. The current application process has three phases included, one being the submission of an application, and two being the evaluation of that application, and three being the panel interviews. So existing operators-
Three being what? I'm sorry.
The panel interviews with the city-appointed board or panel. So the existing operators will only be subject to phase one and two. If they, upon application evaluation, scoring, and they have a minimum qualifying score of 90%, then they would get awarded their license.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Nope. Okay, to the council. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. Sergio, on your last point you just made, would they be able, do you think, move forward within the next year?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Robinson. So, once we get through this process and get all our ordinances adopted and the scoring evaluation criteria adopted, we'll open up an application window. All applicants would be welcome to submit applications at that time, based on the applications received and, again, the scoring criteria. There's a possibility it could be, the application opens this year, and the license could get awarded by the end of the year for those existing operators.
Okay. I just really do want them to get to speed ahead, so whatever we can do to move them. They have been waiting very patiently, and that was always my intention of having the conversion. So let me just run through a couple things. Well, let me do this, Mayor. I'm not sure. I guess there's four different items, so I don't know. We'll probably need a motion for each one. Is that correct?
My understanding is that this was for further direction to staff, and we'll be coming back on August 6. What? Is that correct?
What will happen will depend on what the council's direction here is. If there are significant modifications to the ordinances as introduced here, then we will require reintroduction of the ordinance at a future hearing.
Okay.
So that would be, and that will depend on what the motion is from council. I don't know that we need separate motions or individualize. You can take it in different packages, but maybe kind of lay out what it is you're looking to do, and we can address it from there.
Well, it's just to try and minimize the time. So let me, related to the Oceanside city code ordinance, I would make a motion that we adopt staff recommendation with the following changes. One is that we do remove the property requirement from the cannabis retail selection process. And to save time, one of the speakers, I think prior to Mr. Knott, kind of hit the key points. But the thing that I would add is for other council members, based on comments made about where some preferred not to have cannabis stores, or where they believe the youth congregate, having, taking this out will allow us to get very quickly, or faster, I believe, to the two most qualified operators, and then they can bring back to us the locations that they find. We're not going to be looking at, staff's not going to have to go through a myriad of these applications, which some may or may not. And then it'll be a much easier discussion about where they're going to go, and they'll know where they're probably more desired to go. So I say that. And if there's a concern about differentiation, I think two things came up in the presentation. One, he talked about proof of capitalization, and it was changed from whatever the loan number was to 250. I think we could use 250 as a starting point and have a higher number as a range. So I'm just throwing a number out, say 250 to a million, and use that as the differentiation for points. The other thing that we could do, and this came, I think we all received the letter, reference collective bargaining agreement. There's a section in the code, oh, man, I thought I had it, was it 918? Oh, on page 919, the top paragraph, it talks about applicants that propose to pay their employees 10%. And then I think there was another, we receive full points, applicants less, deducted applicants at minimum wage, disqualified. But we could also incorporate, and I would suggest, applicants that have CBAs in place, collective bargaining agreements, maybe that we support that, and then they have a higher point level. So use that as a differentiator. And I'm going to just jump through this real quick. Then on page, so 920, so it gets, 920, on page 920, it talks about the grant license priority of the city's two existing operators. And I don't know if that needs to be a separate motion that, because it says for adopt a resolution granting license priority to the two existing operators. I think that's in there. I just, I don't know if it's sufficient to meet the need. Does that, is that section, as you see it, Sergio, sufficient for you if we adopt this as one motion, or?
Councilmember Robinson, I think the most clarity would be provided to act on each component of the item with a separate individual motion. I think you're referring to the item number four of the four items. That's a separate resolution granting priority to the existing operators.
So that would be a separate, you'd like, we need to do it that way?
I think so, yes.
Okay. I just would like to just interject. Depending on what collectively you're going to be asking for, there's going to be different aspects that need to be changed. For instance, if the direction is to remove the locational requirement, right, that requires a revision to the city code that's not proposed currently. There's a provision within the city code that requires the application to include the zoning clearance component of it. So that's not just changing the resolution that is, you know, item three of four, but it is changing the city code. So, you know, the motion overlaps a little bit when you start talking about changing different components. As well, you know, if you remove the locational requirements, are you going to move them into the zoning ordinance or someplace else so that they're clearly articulated, you know, someplace? So it's a little bit of sausage-making in terms of, you know, one motion. So let's identify what the priorities are, as opposed to the specific resolution. Might be a better way to approach it.
Sounds like we may have to retitle next, or re-
So if I made, if I just make a motion that we remove and vote on that, does that clean the sausage up a little bit?
I think that would. I think if the majority direction is to remove the locational requirements as it's currently proposed, then staff would understand that, you know, we can articulate what the, what that would tear out to, what the changes would be in terms of either proposed ordinance and what the recommendations would be from that.
Okay.
And that would require reintroduction.
Okay.
Okay, so that's my motion, then, that we remove the property requirement from the cannabis retail RFP selection process?
Meaning it would be handled purely through the conditional use permit process, secondary to the selection of the operators of-
Yes, as it says in the, in the staff report, I believe, that, how did you word it? Let's see, "If the city council elects not to require the identification of a business site as part of the local licensing application rating process, staff would simply," see, it's simple, "simply remove all related elements from the application materials and procedures."
It's a little more than that.
So if I may add, Councilmember Robinson, that would, that would suffice for item number three and item number one. So we, item number one requires removal of some language in the ordinance. Item number three would require removal of that component of the application. So the application will only have two components, and the total value of that application will be 100 points. So you'd still have to get 90 points out of 100 points to have a qualifying application. It's pretty simple. So I think with your direction, if the council wants to vote on that, we could certainly implement that motion.
Okay, so I'll stop there and not to mess it up anymore, and just, that's my motion.
All right. I would like to also include, however, the CBAs, which, from the letter from the UFCW, Local 135, indicated incorporating CBAs into the scoring rubic would promote operators who are committed to protecting workers from the first day of operations, attract businesses with a proven history of honoring labor commitments in other jurisdictions, and ensure that the cannabis industry provides meaningful career pathways and family-sustaining jobs for Oceanside residents. So that's, you're including in that?
Yes, if that doesn't mess up, if that doesn't-
No, I think we still have to come back, but it'll give the opportunity for the public to speak on these changes as well.
Is that?
What we would offer is, if that's the desire, we could certainly incorporate that into the valuation criteria. It's going to change the scoring matrix some, so we're going to have to work through that and figure that out. We would certainly want to bring that back to council for their consideration. We would also recommend that if you remove the locational criteria, if you vote to remove the locational criteria from the application evaluation process, that you incorporate those similar tenants into the zoning ordinance within Article 36 and separation of regulated uses. We would add a new section to address that matter. The staff feels it's very important to make sure that we're protecting, you know, institutes of education and other sensitive land uses that would be consistent with state law.
What he said.
Okay.
Whatever.
But I also wanted to address the issue that you indicated about educational institutions, because I know this has come up, I brought this up before, on Mission Avenue, there's a high concentration of schools and parks, and any time, and I know you've seen kids walking from Oceanside High when school breaks, and they're walking all along Mission. And if it was to be 500 feet or even 1,000 feet, that would be right across the street from the high school. So I'd like to see more like a half a mile from a school or a park, and because we really need these protections for the youth.
The kids can't get in.
So let me, let me tell you, well, you remember when you were young?
That's right.
When you had, when you got alcohol when you were like 16 or 17, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, you had somebody else buy it for you.
They're getting it now.
So one of the things that we've had in the most criminalized communities for, for our city of Oceanside is that, I mean, some of our young men especially would go away to prison for a joint. This was in the early days, and it was a cycle. It became a cycle. And for many, many, I mean, they're basically just getting back their Fourth Amendments protections. My concern is the re-criminalization of these communities, and we have more now than we did before. We had one major one in Oceanside, and that is the Eastside community. But then Crown Heights grew, and then Libby Lake, and now John Landis. So I feel that, and then, and just to add to this narrative, during COVID, when the illegal pot shops were popping up, there was one on San Diego Street, and kids were riding their bicycles with backpacks. And I wonder what that was all about. They were delivering, right? They were delivering. And then I got a call from some teachers at Jefferson saying, "Hey, we've got, we've got marijuana, we've got cannabis in the locker rooms."
Nope.
Locker, the lockers. "What's going on?" So we were able to, you know, kill that illegal pot shop, but the, but the thing is, kids weren't walking in to get this. Others were. Adults were. So what happens is there's higher access. Big concern of mine are the edibles, because that's not something you can get so easily in the black market. Marijuana's everywhere, but that can lead to other things when you're dealing. And creating a business, again, in the community, would set the communities back. So this would add to the scoring if they're not within a half a mile of a school. That would really go really far in terms of ensuring that our kids have half a chance of, of surviving their youth and not getting in trouble. Like unfortunately, my growing up, I saw a lot of that. So it's still happening. It'll happen even more. And unfortunately, the members of the youth- And unfortunately, the members of the youth commission wanted to be here today to talk to us. Folks from Project Reach wanted to be here to talk to us, but they're, they were not able to. The youth don't want it near the schools. So, and hey, close to, if not already registered to vote. So I, I don't see why we can't easily put this in with respect to youth. Staff have anything to say to that?
Yes, Mayor Sanchez, so we anticipated this, this topic of conversation. We prepared a graphic for the council's benefit that we could share with the council, which we buffered a half a mile radius around each school in the city. What the concern from staff's perspective would be, we are, well, let me back up. We have as much concern about protecting the youth as council has expressed and that's why we thought it was important to include that in the evaluation criteria and to preclude any site that's within the prescribed distances as it's drafted today. What we don't want to do, we want the program to, as well as to be successful. And if we are too onerous with the, with the preclusion, with the half mile, we may eliminate so many sites that there's very few sites available to establish these types of uses. So this graphic would depict, all those areas in red would be precluded from being able to have a store, a cannabis retail store. So it would just limit the opportunities for these businesses to be established if we go a half mile. We could certainly, we also prepared a graphic that shows a thousand foot radius for comparison purposes to give the council an idea of how many sites we eliminate. So that's the, that's the half mile radius.
A thousand won't do it. I mean, you walk by these areas
Can you show it?
From school.
Certainly, so a thousand feet, if you're within a thousand feet under the proposed criteria today, if you're a thousand feet from a high school, that would preclude you from having a retail store in that, in that particular location. This, this graphic depicts a thousand foot radius. So we open up a larger number of locations for these businesses to establish with a thousand foot radius as opposed to a half mile radius.
And Steve was 600.
And as a, just as a way of some background and information, under state law, the minimum distance that one of these facilities could be located is 600 feet. So we're going above quite a bit, 40% more than what the state requires if we went with a thousand foot radius from these sensitive land uses.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff. I'm trying to understand the rubric. I, I don't want to take us back, but, so can you explain to me if we remove the 50 points from the location criteria? How are we going to evaluate, what's the point scale that we're evaluating applicants?
Certainly, Councilmember Figueroa, so if we remove the third section of the evaluation criteria, rather than being a 90% out of 150 points, it'd be 90% out of 100 points. So it simplifies it a little bit in that, you know, you get, you got 10 points to lose on an application, otherwise you're disqualified.
Sure. Um, and our grandfathered businesses, they still have to meet the 90-point minimum, correct?
That's correct. That's what staff has been recommend, has recommended to council.
Okay. Um, for the school buffers, um, so how do, how do we do that? Let's say we select, we have our two grandfathered operators, we select two winning applicants and now they're going to come back to us, they're going to have this to go off of. It's not on a point scale anymore, so it's just they have to operate within this buffer. Is that what we're saying? So
Outside of that buffer.
And so right here, we're only saying, this is only a school buffer, but you can be away from a school and near an after-school program if we do it that way, right?
Or apart.
And so I, I think that there's, that's something else to consider. Is this also, is this just taken into consideration, Oceanside Unified, Vista Unified, and Carlsbad Unified? The charter schools are involved as well?
These are, this data set is from the state. This identifies all schools that are licensed through the state, so includes public schools and private schools, charter schools.
Okay. I, I think, you know, in respect to the community, in respect to some of the comments that our mayor has made, and I made comments at our previous meeting, just in regards to the over criminalization of cannabis and our under-invested marginalized communities throughout the history of Oceanside, um, you know, there is a certain respect there to what took place and what is, what is now being monetized for things that, you know, I was placed on the curve many times for as a teenager. And so I, 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 my only thing is if we just look at it from a school buffer, we're not considering the after-school programs in these areas where we have a lot of teenagers. Not trying to limit this more than what it already is because essentially we're just looking at District Three and a little bit of District Two and a little bit of District One. I, I think that, um, finding some type of medium within the point systems that are already here that staff can present may help open it up a little bit, but certainly we don't want them, you know, concentrated near Crown Heights and the East Side or the Deep Valley, Mid Valley, or the Tri-City area. I think that this is one option, but if we go with this simply, we are moving away from everything else that was on the minor point deduction distances. I don't know if there is a medium that we can find where it can also be beneficial to the operators, but that we can also consider these other locations within the city as well. But I don't want to operate lightly when it comes to our sensitive buffers. I, I think that it was very important to me when we first went through this. I know that this provides a, an additional task for the staff to have to work through, but it is very important to the community. But I do want to find a medium that we can work with our operators.
Certainly, so Councilmember Figueroa could offer a couple comments to your, to your concerns. You know, staff thought the location criteria is important, that's why I included it in the valuation criteria for the applications. Perhaps a, there's an option or an opportunity to include the same buffering requirements in our zoning ordinance or similar. We'd have to work through this a little bit and refine it perhaps. We, we're as interested as you are and as the council is as, as protecting these sensitive land uses. So we've kind of defined what a sensitive use is and we provided some, some scoring criteria. If we don't want this to be part of the scoring criteria, then certainly we can somehow work the similar distances into the zoning ordinance as opposed to not including them and only focusing on schools.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I do, like, Councilmember Robinson brought up and the mayor supported was removing the location requirement at this point because it does give us the opportunity to work with the winning applicants, to figure out a location that, um, you know, we want our operators to be successful as well. Like, that, that is something that we definitely want here in the city. So I'm not saying that it's a, you know, take it or leave it, but hopefully we can work, we can find something suitable where we're respecting the concerns for our youth, respecting, um, the reality and history of our city with cannabis in regards to the over-criminalization of which communities were really being impacted by it, but at the same time finding a medium where we can, where our winning applicants can set up a successful business as well. And so, um, trying to find something in the middle, but also in respect to what has been shared, so.
Mr. Borrego?
Yeah, Honorable, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, and just to keep things in mind as well, um, you know, as we've explained before, and I know council's aware, this is, there's a two-phase process, right? Because some of the separation requirements, as an example, where, where kids congregate, in my mind, that's probably best analyzed through the conditional use permit process because that's when staff really gets down into the fine details of the applications and does a really close look of what the surrounding uses are. And certainly, you know, hearing what council's concerns are, if we had an operator and they wanted to open the shopping center and we knew that there was, you know, a teen-related use in that shopping center, we would certainly, that would factor into our recommendation for sure. And, um, you know, to your point, and I do think it is one of the benefits of removing the location requirements on the front end, knowing that as we work with the winning applicants, we can really kind of roll up our sleeves and work with them closer to find out a precise location that kind of checks all the boxes, so to speak. I also wanted to clarify one thing too, and I think it may help clarify a comment that was made by staff earlier, in the scoring criteria that currently exists right now, that, you know, may be amended or removed altogether based on what we were just discussing right now, there are actually some hard prohibitions in there. And so those are the ones that I think we would want to, at a minimum, consider carrying over into the zoning ordinance. As an example, right now, under the evaluation criteria that's in the application material, any location that's within 349 feet of a residential use, within 549 feet or less of an elementary or middle school, or 999 feet from any high school, that's a hard prohibition. So they can't even ask for a waiver. So my thinking is if we get to the point of bringing this back to council, you know, if there are those hard waivers that the council's interested in, and may have been identified tonight, those should go into the zoning ordinance and just be a hard prohibition. They'll get taken out of the scoring criteria, but those are like hard prohibitions that are non-negotiable. Everything else, you know, in my mind, could either be addressed in the zoning ordinance or just simply looked at through the conditional use permit process.
So like a combination of hard line and?
Yeah.
Councilmember Figueroa, are you done?
No, I just, I appreciate that. I think, I mean, obviously, we all, I know OPD's aware, I've, I've worked with youth the majority of my career, so, um, you know, just to give you an example, Matt, you have Madison Middle School on Lake, but as soon as school ends, the entire shopping center where all the youth congregate to the McDonald's and Walgreens. And it's like that almost at every school, they find that location. When Oceanside High gets out, everyone crosses the street over to Wendy's, Walmart, Panda. And so, you know, just taking all that into consideration. And so we already have issues there when school ends in those locations. Um, you know, just to add something else, we want to minimize that. And so, um, you know, as we move forward with this, I think even having OPD's input will be important, so.
Uh, Council, Deputy Mayor Joyce?
Thank you. Okay. So I'm fully supportive of what was just brought up. I'm, I'm glad the city manager brought up because that's kind of what I was thinking is the hard prohibitions on 1,000 feet from a middle school or high school, whatever the appropriate amount is from the elementary schools, but absolutely 1,000 feet from middle school, high school, I would say just, that could be a disqualifying factor and that would, that's important to me. The other areas that I wanted to bring up were, um, to make sure that we don't have clusters. So if there, there probably should be a specific prohibition on opening a new cannabis retail within a certain distance of an already approved cannabis retail location as a hard line as well. I know that, I just don't know which ones are, which one in there are like variable and which one are hard lines. So I'm just suggesting that that should be a hard line as well, so we don't have clusters. I would also, again, like to bring forward opening up the coastal zone because I think that will help keep them from being clustered in those small areas. When you look at the coastal zone, there's a big stretch there that is out of the, out of the 1,000 feet from any school sites. And so it just would actually have some areas that I think are, you, are decent. I understand is that the whole process we'd have to go through, but if we agree, we could go ahead and get that started. I just ask, is, do staff have, do staff feel like our process sufficiently prevents the selling off of licenses, the using of fronts or locals to, to use the, the area? I just want to make sure that we've kind of turned every stone on that because I have heard those horror stories from other cities as well, people having a retail in their name and not completely realizing that they hit a retail. I mean.
Deputy Mayor Joyce, staff is comfortable with our integrity and safeguard standards that we included into the request tonight. Of those, there's a four-year prohibition on transfers of ownership interest, so that's four years of operation, then you can transfer a license. We also aren't allowing people to submit duplicate applications, so you can't just submit for one company on 50 different sites. You also can't submit with those same owners, 50 different applications for one site. So we've looked into the issue and we believe the proposed program adequately addresses it.
Thank you. So I also agree with removing the site requirement on the front end. I would ask if staff thinks maybe there should be other differentiations, then maybe waiting more on the local community benefit or the local, um, known entities locally. Other possible separators would be, oh, this is something that hasn't been brought up yet. I think we should require any operators who are going through the fast-track lane to include a labor peace agreement, so a car check neutrality agreement. And that would align with the collective bargaining agreement that is, that we're adding to the other side of the, of the application. And that essentially says that they won't interfere and they'll recognize a union if the majority of their employees say they want to be in a union.
What are we waiting for?
I, I'd just note that on the labor peace agreement, there is a requirement presently under state law as part of the state licensing requirement in the Business and Professions Code that already addresses that. So I don't know that the city would wait in there. I would also note that Oregon has a similar law that was just struck down by a federal court, so.
That, what was just struck down?
The Oregon's requirement that their cannabis operators enter into a labor peace agreement as a condition of licensing.
Really? That's, and that was which district? Was it the ninth?
I believe it was a trial court or some district court in Oregon, but I'd have to double-check the specifics on that.
High California?
Just saying, if you want to include it as a recommendation, we can look closer at it, but currently it's governed by state law. So we don't need an additional requirement locally where state law governs.
Okay. Um, all right, I think that's all I had.
Uh, Councilmember Robinson, or did you want to hear from Councilmember Weiss first?
No, Councilmember Weiss, sorry.
Well, I like the evaluation criteria staff came up with as far as prohibitions and distances, and I'll keep my comments short. I think someone should submit with their application where they want to go so we can evaluate it upfront without having, I mean, we're already, we're going to kick this can down the road for another three to six months now before it comes back to us again. To pick somebody and then go through some process where they have to go out and find the location only for us than to have to grant a waiver, I'd rather do it upfront, so.
Councilmember Robinson?
I guess that means you won't second my motion.
No, no one has yet, no.
You're right, nobody has. So let me just clarify, so.
Perhaps.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Perhaps we can, because it seems like there's like majority support for some things, haven't heard majority support for some other things.
Staff has direction.
Staff has direction.
My, my motion is to, again, remove the property requirement and incorporate, as you suggested, Mayor, the collective bargaining agreement in the scoring criteria. And I think, I don't think we need to do anything with the
About the youth stuff?
The what?
The youth, the schools.
But
The hard lines.
But we already have that in the CUP stuff, we'll deal with that, it's already
No, the hard line stuff. So I, I think, I think there's clear direction.
I won't mind the, the things that I had, I just mentioned, I would like to call a vote on that or see if there's a second for that. And then we can have another motion for these other things.
I think there's clear direction on some things. And then some that, that, you know, did not have anyone else.
No, I'm not going to do that.
Yeah.
I, I don't
So I think three of us are concerned about youthish, youth issues and we're in a, basically in agreement with what staff is suggesting.
Make your own motion. I'm just saying that, why can't we do this and then make your own motion?
Asking, can you have a second and then we can talk about that? Is that, can, is that possible?
No, I think we've been talking, I think he, he wants a motion and a second, but I think if we don't, if, if we, if we don't include it now, it will not be included.
Why?
And I don't think that that is what we want to do. Because I, I do feel that we need to have some hard lines.
We have them, 1,000 feet?
No, we don't.
1,000 feet?
That's, that's only from the high schools according to the, that's why I added
The middle schools.
A thousand feet from all middle and high schools. It's not what it is in the thing. It's not what it is in the thing.
It's all schools, right?
That's what that shows, it's not what the applicant is.
Councilmember Weiss, that's what the graphic depicts. The way the evaluation criteria is set up, it's a little different. It's a certain distance from residential, a certain distance from elementary or middle school, and a certain distance from a high school.
Mr. Borrego?
Yeah, if I can clarify, just for the record, so right now, as it exists in the scoring criteria with respect to schools, the hard line prohibition is 549 feet or less from any elementary or middle school and 999 feet or less from any high school. So that's, that's the hard line prohibitions that currently exist in the scoring criteria. So we can either move those distance separations directly into the zoning code, or if it's council's desire, change those distances based on whatever the flavor is.
I think we included middle schools. That is, that is definitely another...
Yeah, we could add the 999 feet or less from any high school or middle school.
I'd be fine with that, but...
Yeah, we need that.
And then 549 from all other schools.
Yeah, so that exists, so we can add, I'll agree to add the middle schools.
Doesn't exist yet.
So with that, is there a second?
I'll second one.
Thank you.
Second the motion.
There is a second.
This is going to have to come back on August 6th to be reintroduced, correct?
Yes, this is going to require a significant revision to the ordinance as drafted, both the city code revisions and the zoning ordinance, as well as the resolutions regarding the scoring criteria, application materials, and processes.
So we'll have another chance for the public to come in and weigh in on these, because right now, it's not really clear to me if this is, this goes far enough.
Just to clarify, whether that's August 6th or whether it's the first available opportunity based on the agenda scheduling and the ability of staff to complete the work. Yes.
Okay. Since council's going to be dark in July, and I would, I would imagine that that's when some staff will be taking some vacay as well, maybe. Yeah. I think that's why Rocky suggested in the first place. He was really thinking about staff. Okay, Mr. Borrego, did you have anything else to say?
Yep.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor, is there something else you wanted to say? No, okay. All right, so this will be coming back. We'll see how this ends up working. I still have some concerns that I've listened to from the community, had last couple of days, been talking to a lot of folks in the community, in the different communities. So we do have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-2. Sanchez, Weiss, Snow.
Thank you, and that is the end of the agenda, except for council member comments. General council member comments. Do we have any requests to speak? And we have something, a request from Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you very much. Normally, what we would do for this is I'd ask for a moment of silence, but I want to share, this gentleman that I'm going to talk about deserves a little more than a moment of silence. So many of you know or may know Stephen Fetzer. He passed away on April 18th, 2025 tragically. His parents, Kimberly and his stepmothers, Kimberly, stepfather George Murray, own Beach House Winery out in District 2 up off of Sleeping Indian. Today was Stephen's celebration of life, and just, so this kid's an Oside original, right? Born there in Oceanside. I think it's important to know that the type of young man that we lost at 23 years of age. At 15, he was an Eagle Scout. I don't even know you could get higher awards than Eagle Scouts, six Eagle Palms above the Eagle rank. He worked as a camp counselor. He was in every sport you can think of, scouting, golfing, surfing, taekwondo, baseball, diving, fishing, skiing, and many other things. But his real love was flying, and just prior to his passing, while he was studying for his bachelor's degree in aeronautics, he did earn his dream of becoming a private pilot in February of this year. So I thank the mayor for allowing us to close this meeting in memory and in honor of Stephen Robert Fetzer. Thank you.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Joyce, did you want to say something?
I didn't want to go after that, but just come to Juneteenth on Saturday. If you're not planning to, it's a great event. It's a long-running event here in the city.
And I do want to say briefly that we had a Sandag meeting this past Friday, and it took up SB 79, the horrific amendments they want to make. That would include being able to do at a transit stop up to seven-story, even if it's a single-family residential. The Sandag Board voted unanimously against, and the Sandag Board plans on attending, going to Sacramento to make its voice heard. So I just want to say that we have been working really well together to address some of these issues that are happening. And please enjoy the July 3rd fireworks and the light show, which hopefully will be the primary thing. I've been having this conversation with the city manager about replacing our fireworks with the light show, so this is, this is a, you know, half and half. See how people, what people think about that. But yes, the, the Murrays have been a wonderful, wonderful family. They've been taking us to the front of agritourism. They were the first to do this, and we actually, we came up with legislation. Their son, Steve, was, was involved and would pour in talking with them. They were sharing in some of the work of this dream that they had, so this was a very, very sudden thing. They're still looking for answers, and so it is truly, truly something that you never, never think will happen. A young man, very, very promising, taken very early. So I'm, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting in honor of Steve and the Murray, the Murray family, and we will be adjourned until August 6th, Wednesday, August 6th. Thank you.